I'm now calling this meeting to order firstly of the zoning board of review for the town of Tiverton, July 7th, 2023. We are here for three matters on the board of review and one matter on the board of appeals. Our legal counsel has asked me if we could begin with the approval of the minutes. And I believe that the minutes are for...
Where are they? Where are they?
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Well, we have a number of them to approve of. First, we have the January 4th meeting, 2023. That was the board of review and the board of appeals minutes. I don't believe I was present for that. Mr. Collins, I think you were...
No, you were there.
I was there? Okay. You sure? Okay. All right, I was there. What do you know? Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes. All sets?
Both sets.
Both sets.
And I'm sorry, those dates were January 4th, February 1st, and March 1st?
Are you going to do everything?
Yeah. All set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Welcome to this meeting. It's, we'll be sitting from 7:00 until 10:00 tonight, and anything that we can't finish by 10:00 will be continued to another evening. The first matter, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Lisi Gishite. I'm the chair. To my left is Mike Marcello, who is our town solicitor. To his left is George Alzabak, who's a full voting member. Ed Schober. To his left is our alternate. And we have Tara Ferrera, serving as a stenographer, and Marian Escobar, as our official stenographer. To my right is Dave Campbell. I knew I was going to do that. Dave Collins, who is our vice chair. And to his right is Jay Jackson, who's, both of whom are full voting members. The first matter I'd like to call is noted as a clarification on a matter that we heard on January 4th, 2023, which was a petition that had been filed by Alfred Asuza, 51 King Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island, 02878, for a dimensional variance at 51 King Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island, 02878, plat 516, lot 107, in an R80 zoning district, to seek relief pursuant to Article 4, Section 1, the lot width dimension table requiring that lots be 200 feet wide at the front yard setback of the property. Lot A with variance of 32 feet where 168 feet are proposed and 200 feet is required. And Lot B with a variance of nine feet where 191 feet are present and 200 feet is required. Is there someone here to represent the petitioner?
There is. Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening. Court Chappelle Law Office is at 171 Chase Road in Portsmouth, Rhode Island, and I have Mr. Sousa with me. I hope you're going to find this pretty simple. In January...
Don't be so sure.
I know that. I know where I am. This is, the lots and the lot lines that you have before you are exactly what you approved. They're exactly what went to the planning board on concept and exactly what went to the planning board at preliminary subdivision. Exactly what you got the advisory opinion on that it was okay to do. The question became, and I assure you in doing this in Tiverton for a number of years, I think the boards have looked at it differently. So I'm going to try to explain. You have a unique ordinance that calls for how much lot frontage you need, 150 feet. Both of these lots have 150-foot of frontage. Your particular ordinance also says that you need lot width of 200 feet. You have before seen hockey stick lots and irregular shaped lots. What the ordinance says is that the lot width will be 200 feet at the minimum setback. So on the plans that we showed you, the house on the right side of the plan, I believe it's the east, is already built and is built a couple hundred feet back from the road. We drew the setback line where the house existed, and that width is 191 feet, 200 feet off the street, but at 191, like a hockey stick lot would be, the envelope to build would be back in the rectangle. And we got a nine-foot variance. When the planning board, the new interpreters of the world of the planning board in Tiverton looked at it, and I see the literal meaning, they said the minimum front yard setback is 50 feet. So by definition, you need 200 feet of width at 50 feet regardless of where your house is. So even if you take the house back to where the lot swells to 200 feet, which normally doesn't even require a variance, in this case, we moved, you filed a decision that said based on the setback being moved back to where the house is, that width at 191, it's a nine-foot variance. It's the exact same lot if you say, if I go 250 feet away, it's a 60-foot variance because it's a 52.88-foot variance. Same lot if you measure it 50 feet away. The logic is a little interesting because if you have 150 feet of frontage and you say that you need 200 feet at the setback, then the only lots your ordinance addresses is lots that pie out immediately for 50 feet. They don't handle hockey stick lots or irregular shaped lots, which there's a bunch of examples even recently that the town has issued building permits and approved. So what I believe, and we've done it in the past, is it is a correctly, it is a nine-foot variance, but we draw the setback line on the plan, and you can see that it was drawn on the plan, and then your decision says the house must be here, your setback line is set here, and because you're 191 feet, thank you for the nine-foot variance. The house is not going to move, it's in the same place, but you could, if you so choose, and I think the planning board wanted clarification, that I'd rather not call that a nine-foot variance 200 feet back. I'd rather call it a 52-foot variance at the 50-foot minimum. It is pretty much semantics, but historically, not the way that we have and you have looked at it in the past. I think it's a nine-foot variance and you move the setback line. Do you understand? If I, if a person came in and did a hockey stick lot and got permission, and there was 120 foot of frontage, you wouldn't let him build until you got 50 feet back and had a 200-foot width. It's just where you set the front setback. What they're saying is the setback is 50 feet here, so yes, you can build your house here, but it's not a nine-foot variance because this is 191, it's a 50-foot variance because this is 150. That's it.
Well, you asked for the nine, the nine feet.
Because that's, and the minimum setback line to be at the house because that's the way, and that's the way we've interpreted in the past for one. And remember, I had already gone to the planning board and already shown it to the planning board. This changed at the planning board between round one and round two, which is okay. There's two different people, have different interpretations, but it's not, when I go to the planning board and show that to them and say it's a nine-foot variance, and they all say, let's support the nine-foot variance, and then when it comes back and they say, well, maybe it should have been a 50-foot variance, my answer is, I don't care, except you cost my client a couple of months, but as long as the lot's still approved. But I'd obviously have a little bit of a problem if somebody said, well, we're going to call it a 50-foot variance and start over. That would, that would bring me anxiety.
So what are you asking us to clarify?
The planning board's asking you to clarify, but even without that, in fairness, when it went back to the planning board, they put a condition on the approval of the plan. One, that you called it either a nine-foot variance and clarified it your way, or called it the 52-foot, 52.8-foot variance and did it the way they were interpreting. But they added a second condition, that is, condition of filing to the plan to the satisfaction of the building department, my client moved some debris, for lack of other words, some things he had on the lot that were questionably zoning issues. And he, they made a condition. So it's here for that condition anyway. They put the condition on there, but I told them that I would let you know about the condition as well.
Is that the same condition I said at that meeting, he needed to clean that lot?
Yeah.
Same condition, been there all along, though?
Same.
Same condition when we proved the nine foot, that he needed to clean?
Yes.
Before, okay.
It is. They said it too, so I said I'd re-put it. I don't know if it found its way in your decision. I never, I know there was a decision written because people called me and told me the decision was written, and then I got a call from legal saying it was being held.
Do, do...
When I say legal, I believe that was...
Planning board legal.
Planning board. Well, and even then, I think, I believe it was Ashley or Ed that called me.
Do you have any case law or any kind of analogy that you can make, how we can count it as the nine?
Well, only that you've all sat here before, and if we enjoy Brown Tiverton, I know that Mr. Sousa, being a little upset, looked at a lot of them, and we found three lots that there's been building permits issued within the last year that are clearly not 200 feet at the 50-foot setback, and that setback lines are drawn on the plans in order to mark where the, where the building must be.
But it seemed like you're asking us to change our vote from nine feet to 50 feet, just arbitrarily, just changing.
No, I'm asking, you approved a lot that was...
On nine feet.
Perfect, but the lot was the lot. It was shown, and the house is built. The house is drawn, the house is built. So you're not saying, nothing that you do moves that house and builds it in a different place? If you said, well, I said 191 and now it's 50, quite frankly, I could move the house forward. If you want to say it's not fair, if you move this house and call it a 55-foot variance, I could rip that house down and put it anywhere on that lot. Not the widest part of that lot, but anywhere on that lot. You made a condition in your decision that the houses had to be placed where drawn because that's where we did the minimum setbacks, and that's where we got the variances. So you corrected it with your decision that said the new front yard for that lot is that, that line we drew equal with the house, which I don't have the exact distance, but a couple hundred feet back off the road. If you change this arbitrarily to a 55-foot variance, in theory, we could bring that house all the way to the road. Now we can't have any structures because we have a minimum setback at the nine-foot variance line. And again, your decision wrote that in, and we had that on the map. I suppose if in the future you want to call it that 50 feet, I don't think you're going to see them because I don't think it makes sense. You're just going to see waivers on them. Because you're going to, if a hockey stick lot comes in front of you, what you're going to say is, I'll waive the 200-foot lot requirement, but thou shalt not build until you get back to the widest part of the lot. I'm not going to let you build in the lane roadway and hockey stick part.
This is something... It's pretty clear that, the plan that you, I mean, what you're saying is the plan that you submitted and that we approved of.
Right.
And you didn't even need a variance to subdivide to begin with, given the amount of land involved. I don't know how...
We noticed the abutters during...
We don't, I just asked.
What?
We know, the abutters were noticed.
Yeah, I mean, I remember that there were quite, there were a number of people that did show up at the last hearing...
There were notice for this hearing as well.
That contested that, but I don't, I don't know, is anybody here burned a butter to be heard on this matter? Okay. There are some people here, so we'll have to hear from them, too.
That's fine.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to add?
Only that it is exactly the same plan with the houses and exactly the same place.
I understand.
We are not here because we stood in front of these neighbors and said, now we're coming back for something more. That is clearly not what is happening. We were forced to come back here for a policy decision on how Tiverton will look at this going forward. They won't accept my application, calling it 191 anymore, if you say, for clarification purposes, I now want it to be called a 54-foot variance from the front. But they accept that variance, the department accepts the variance, it goes to the planning board, and everybody doesn't catch it on the first time because there's two ways to look at it, and it was only the second round back where it was caught, and I get the semantic argument, but, but there's nothing that's changing.
Any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Chappelle?
Did this ever happen before?
What's, what, this is on...
You have to push it.
What is the impact? Well, how do I word this? If we leave our decision as it is now so that you have a nine-foot variance, is, how, does that have any impact on you other than we call it nine feet instead of 51 or whatever it is?
Well, it's an, I think it might have to go a second step. It's a nine-foot variance based on the zoning board's interpretation that the minimum setback is what we set as the minimum setback based on the width of the lot.
Yeah, but why would we not be consistent? We've had an interpretation for many, many, many years.
The interpretation you've had for many years is my interpretation.
Well, we have had it for many years.
For, and that's the way...
Our interpretation.
Your interpretation and my interpretation, in my opinion, are the ones we have had for many years.
Yes.
You have hockey stick lots all over the place where we step back the minimum. We do it in cul-de-sacs under a separate ordinance, and a cul-de-sac, we only have 75 on the cul-de-sac, but you can't build until you get far enough back to get the lot width.
Well, the way we did it, the nine-foot relief you got, that's the way we would have done it many, over the many years that we've been interpreting this requirement.
I agree. I think the planning board...
So we need to be consistent.
Right. And I think the planning board just wants to know that's the way you're going to do it, and it's not a mistake, because they're seeing things sometimes for the first time. And just because these ordinances are interpreted for many years, we all kind of follow what we did last time, it doesn't necessarily mean that when you look at a literal interpretation, you can't look at it a different way. My opinion, they saw it a different way.
One second. So we, I have a question for you. So we passed it, we gave them that approval. Why is the planning board even questioning? Are they sitting on an appeal or something? I've not... No, so why they even, why they even have the right?
And they gave back a positive recommendation again.
No, my question is, why do they have the right to appeal our decision? They're not sitting in that power, they're, that decision, this is our decision, you move on with it.
I don't, it's not fair to say they're appealing their decision.
Appealing our decision.
It came, no, but they're not. What they're saying, I thought, from my understanding, is Ashley looked at it and said, I don't see why this is a nine-foot variance. If I read the ordinance literally, and the minimum setback is 50 feet from King Road, you have 147 feet there, and 200 minus 147 is 53, not 9. You got a nine-foot variance. And I said, well, no, the interpretation has been that the widest point of the lot, when we move the minimum lot line back, we measure it there. I want clarification on that.
Well, it seems to me that when you applied for relief, you asked for the nine feet. We granted that based on the plans that you submitted, though I don't understand why the planning board's having a problem.
I assure you in the future...
I'm sorry?
I assure you in the future, I'm going to say, I'm asking for nine-foot variance, the interpretation of one way, and please, and please know that it's 53 feet from what would be the minimum lot line if you did not move it. And it's going to be crystal clear, and it won't ever happen again with my office.
So it was advertised, when we first heard this in January, as a nine, two variances, but Lot A and B, but we're talking about Lot B, I believe, and it was advertised and noticed as a nine-foot variance at this, at the, where the area where the house was.
Yes.
No question about that.
And, and the 191 is written at that line, and the house is shown, and the setback line is drawn.
And it's a minimum setback of 50 feet.
Yes.
Right. So that's, so you believe because it's a minimum setback that you can go farther than the, you can, you can set the, the line farther back if you want to, it's a minimum, not a maximum, correct?
Yes.
And so that's historically been the interpretation, and again, these people here have a lot longer than I have, that's historically definition?
But twofold.
Yeah.
Historically, not only is it the maximum, but when you look at granting relief, you set that. You set what I considered the, not the maximum, but far back, you set that as a minimum. And that's why when you wrote the decision, house must be located on Lot B where it is. That, I don't think that's artfully drafted, as it may be, to say, the new setback line is back there, but we, we explain that you, you can't go build a structure on the, on the front part of a narrow lot.
And the house is already there.
The house has been there for years, yes.
Thank you.
I know that there were some abutters here that, if they'd like to be heard, I'd like to give them an opportunity to speak. Would any of you like to be heard on this matter?
They'd look at for clarification because the building's...
Could you please state your name and address, please?
Elizabeth Stain Hours, 101 Blueberry Lane. Madam Chairman, I think you remember me from the last time...
Oh, yes.
...I brought up a lot of concerns that the residents of Blueberry Lane have...
Could you speak up? I'm not, I'm not, I don't know if you have to push something there, but if you, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Uh-oh. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So we, the residents at Blueberry Lane, we brought up a lot of concerns at the last time we were there. I think you can look at the record and see what they were, I won't waste everybody's time on that. There is an update to that. The right-of-way at the back of Mr. Sousa's property is what we were concerned about, that the reason, one of the reasons he was combining those two lots on King Road was to landlock that property with the intention of developing that right-of-way, not a paper road, a right-of-way, so that he could have access to develop however he sees that back land as he sees fit and have it trample through our neighborhood, which consists of generational families, 15 homes, veterans, elder people, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, people from COVID that have come to use our private dead-end street for walking their dogs, their children. We've paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for our properties up there because it's a dead-end road, and our fear is that, and actually, it's not our fear, it's something that we know because that right-of-way, there had been markings on the rocks in between the two properties that abut that right-of-way, which Mr. Sousa has no rights to that property at all. I'm not exactly sure I believe it's considered town, but it's not a road, it's a right-of-way, a walking path. And I know this isn't the proper time to bring this up, but I just wanted to give you an update as far as what I said in January, on January 4th, is true. He has no right to vandalize that property by making markings on where his property backs up to the right-of-way, to the back of the residents' properties, and on Blueberry Lane. I just wanted on the record, this is what he does.
Well, this, this is really not germane to the issue that's...
I understand.
And you may have, you know, legal remedies to pursue...
Sure. We will be watching. My whole point was just to bring you up to speed as to what's going on, let you know what's happening. We are not happy about it, and we're prepared to do something about it.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard? Any member of the board have any more questions?
I think I'm all set. I just want you to remember that this is not landlocking anything because although we're cutting off one lot, the second lot, the lot we're talking about with the setback, is still the 19 acres or whatever, the, I don't know the acres, it's still a large piece. It has frontage on King Road. It has whatever that access is on Blueberry, and we're not going to...
I don't think that's germane to what...
But it's not, we didn't landlock it, and we're well aware that if he develops in the future that access through there apparently would be contested.
Yes.
But we, we own both these front lots still as well.
I understand. Okay. If no one else wants to be heard or has any questions, we'll go into our deliberative process. How does the board feel about this?
We have been using an interpretation of the requirement for years, and I think that at this point it would be improper to change the interpretation. Planning board could change the ordinance, or a judge in court could determine that our interpretation is incorrect, in which case we'd have to change, but at this point, I think we have to stick with the original interpretation.
Okay.
I agree with David. Stay the same.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think this is a shell game. I mean, they submitted the plans, no, no one's changed anything except an alternative explanation of what the ordinance means.
It might be...
The board sent it to us with the recommendation that this is what they want.
Exactly. You agree?
I agree, and I, I make a motion to affirm our adaptation of this and what they asked for, and affirm our decision the way it is and stays the way it is.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. All those in favor? Ananmas. I don't know.
Again.
Again, granted.
You never bring anything easy, do you?
I thought I did.
No, you didn't.
The next matter that's before the board, finally, is a special use permit, or in the alternative, a use variance. A petition's been filed by John Cotrell, 35 Main Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island, 02878, for a special use permit, or in the alternative, a use variance at 857 Main Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island, 02878, plat 117, lot 102, in a R30 residential district, to seek mixed use. The applicant desires to continue a mixed use of this property that is more conforming than that which has been present at the property for many years. The premises have, had been a home to a vehicle repair. The applicant proposes to operate a residential contracting company and to clean up the premises. The special use permit is requested under Article 14, Section 7B1, and Article 16. In the alternative, a use variance is requested under Article 14, Section 7B2, and Article 17. Is there someone here on behalf of the petitioner?
I thought, see, some are easy.
You again.
I'm the next one, too, I think. Court Chappelle, 171 Chase Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. I'm here with Mr. Cotrell.
Good evening.
Evening.
I know, I know how it was advertised, but I also know the petition I submitted, and the petition I submitted was for a special use permit. And the reason it's a special use permit is because of a couple of things. One, up until last July or so, this land was zoned commercial, and a legal conforming use on this property were two residential houses and two garages. The garages have been occupied by a tow company and auto repair.
Mr. Chappelle, can I just stop you for one minute? Because there's something about this application that initially confuses me. The application was filed, Mr. Cotrell is the applicant. It indicates that the owner of the property is a Nancy Aruda, and on the plans that were submitted, it indicates the property belongs to Arthur Maderos Jr. So, number one, who owns the property, and do you have the authority to speak for the owner of the property?
I do, and I, and Nick might call me.
I'm sorry?
When we filed this petition, Mr. Cotrell was the holder of a purchase and sales agreement that he has closed on and is the owner of the property as of last week. We were the equitable owner with permission of the landlord that would have, the estate, I think it is, who would have been here, but we have closed on this. We did. And John Cotrell, who's with me tonight, is the owner of the property.
So when you sent all these letters to the abutters, who was the owners on these letters?
Doesn't list the owners.
We send the notice that you tell us to send.
Oh, wow.
You actually send it, and I give you the list, right?
Okay.
And it says the petition, so that's done properly. What really happened is Mr. Cotrell got this property under contract and bought it as a commercial property because it looked like a commercial property, smelled like a commercial property, and was listed like a commercial property.
And who did he buy it from?
Who's the estate?
Sorry?
Who'd we buy it from?
I believe it was the estate of the Maderos. I think it was Sorensen?
Nancy Aruda.
Nancy Aruda.
Oh, sorry, Nancy Aruda.
Nancy Aruda.
The wife of Maderos Jr.
It's the wife of Maderos Jr., but she owned it as part of the estate. And when it was to be transferred, one of the things that came up in a title search was that there was a zone change, I believe, last July... was that there was a zone change, I believe last July, and the town had kind of swathed an area and changed this from commercial to residential. Under your ordinance, when something is changed in a zone, you are a pre-existing non-conforming right. So you're grandfathered. We've all seen that. So now Mr. Cotrell says, the purpose of which I was looking to do this was a little different, and the estate agreed to come forward and to look at the ordinance to see if he could do what he wanted to do. Now, we then look at your ordinance under grandfathered rights and non-conforming. When under Article 14, Section 7B, I believe it is, you have a non-conforming use, this, your ordinance says that by special use permit, the zoning board can approve a similar use, and the standard is that it must be more and less effective to the neighbors and the area, basically a less obnoxious use. We've done that a few times. I've done that with you a few times in other areas. I think we put the counselor down across from the Antiquated Pond. We just show that it's less of a non-conforming use than what was there. So we are prepared tonight with Mr. Cotrell, with a member of the prior family, to say what was there. Most of you, I assume, had, he just bought it, so most of you have seen a drive-by and seen the shape it's in and the storage of things outside. Most of you have knowledge, I'm sure, of that hill and buying mulch or stone there, as I have, and having, I've never personally had cars repaired, but I do know the tow company was operated out of there. Mr. Cotrell owns, so we're gonna draw analogies to that business. Mr. Cotrell is in the process of renovating the two houses, so the mixed use will not change at all. So when it comes from two houses on the property to two houses on the property, that certainly is not more obnoxious or less obnoxious. They're just going to be updated and, and renovated, and it's fallen in a bit of a state of disrepair. As to the garages, they are going to abandon their right to have a car repair, abandon their right to have a tow company, and he is asking you to say that his carpentry business, which many of you know of, can use that as a second location. He currently operates at 35 Main Road, and there's a storefront. He is a general remodeling and contracting, considered a service business that I would say substantially, in every ordinance I've ever written, less obnoxious than car repair and environmental issues and towing and trucking terminals. He also has a relationship and specializes in kitchen design, both as a designer and the installer of cabinets. So his cabinets sometimes get shipped to that location, and he uses it for storage, and also both at 35 Main Road and hopefully here. He has to bring this commercial building into a state of repair that if somebody comes and looks at the display areas, then they look at him and say, that's a contractor I would hire, not this, and, and right now, I don't think I would drive by there and say, if this is the guy that's building my kitchen, he's my guy. So the repairs are, we believe, less for zoning purposes, less noise because there's no outside activity, less odor because, other than the cutting of wood, I guess, to put things together, there's no fiberglass work, there's no oil changes, there's no environmental issues. There's no, the hours of operation are less to, or less or equal to what was there in the past. There's no additional outside lighting, there's no additional buildings. It's just a cleanup of a prior business slash junk area to be the two houses located right across from the gas station. You know, this is Gas House Hill with a small gas station there, and be able to have his carpentry shop. And I can have him explain all of the reasons why I think it's a better fit for a neighborhood than it would be if it stayed its pre-existing use and somebody tried to just restart that.
Could I ask you a question? When, when did you say the zone change was made?
We were told it was made within the year.
July.
This year?
I, I didn't do the closing, but, but it still is non-conforming use. But it was listed as commercial on, originally on the.
Jim Holland gave us.
On the town website, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it remains commercial. I, I don't, I don't remember a zone change in that area that the council approved. Or there was advertising. I mean, I, I honestly, I don't, I don't know. I'm gonna say, I'm, I'm pretty good about, it's a big deal to change a zone, and I don't remember.
No such thing.
I don't remember the council, the planning board.
Well, we're told it's zoned residential now as a non-conforming use.
What's the lot, remember?
102.
117, 102. And according to the town, it's listed as R30 on at least the Tiverton website. And as you know, I do zoning, and we were told it was changed.
What's, I'm sorry, what's the address?
857 Main Road. Yeah, the title company is the one that alleged it.
I'm sorry, can you get the, the booking page again?
Parcel 117.
Parcel, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
Lot 102. But how does that happen? I don't know if John's here. John must have been there.
You can go ahead, I just, I have a problem with the internet, but. The title company may be wrong, because I do not remember zoning, and I'm trying to get on the GPGIS system to see what the zoning is.
There was no zone change in July.
There was an overlay map that showed the zone. Did you see that?
Yeah, the title.
Maybe you should see a copy of that.
Looked at the map on the wall and confirmed that it was recently changed.
Matthew says that when it was filed, they went down with, who are you dealing with? And, and dealt with the map. And somebody confirmed it was recently changed. If it's not changed, God bless you, I don't need you.
Trying to find it. Bracelet.
But you.
John, could you?
There's somebody in the front row that would know.
Have you looked on the GIS? What is it showing?
So on, on GIS and on the, the vision appraisal, it says R30. And when I filed it with John in the building office, he said, are you sure? And we looked, we turned around and looked at the map that's on the wall in the building office, and he said, oh, yeah, it must have been part of that last one, or something along those lines. That's, so that's why we were told to file it. If it's still commercial, it's still commercial.
John confirmed that with me as well. I went in to double check it.
And it was the title company that brought it to our attention initially. So it came from somewhere, and they had an overlay map of what it was and what it is now.
Who owns it?
He owns it now.
So you're right, GIS is.
Right, it's listed everywhere else as, as R30, so that's why we're here.
I own something.
Yeah, we, the GIS map has it as an R30 zone.
The, the change may have been when they did Starwood, so the question is, did they include this by accident, maybe? I don't know, but I know that when somebody drew the map, it looked, we were told, title company brought it up, and then we were told it was confirmed.
The official map has it as an R30 zone. I mean, they, they have a right to rely on the official map, that's what it says.
So, the standard wouldn't change.
Right, right.
But historically, we have some information that it was commercial before. The change is still the same. You can only change your use when the good board says you meet the special use permit criteria because we're allowing non-conforming uses not to expand but to change as long as the change is something that is better than was there. Obviously, if it was a nuclear power plant and somebody wanted a dance studio, the board and the wisdom of the ordinance said, we're gonna allow that. We don't allow the changes the other way.
Well, I, I have some other questions, but I, I'm getting a little confused here. What does this all mean? Is the application, or the, everything is correct?
Everything is correct based upon the official zoning map, which is an R30 zone. So they are, they are, they are a non-conform, they got a commercial use and a non-conform, and a residential zone.
Right.
All right. So you have to apply the standards of the change of use in Section 7 of our zoning ordinance, which is outlined in your memo.
And to me, you would have to accept what this use, the grandfathered use is. So I don't think anyone is going to deny that it's a mixed use in that on the same 20,000 square foot lot, 23,000 square foot lot, there are two single-family residences, and there are the commercial garages that have been historically operated for the three businesses.
Okay, question. You refer to in, in the, the meeting agenda, you refer to a residential contractor company. And you've been talking about a carpenter shop. And I, I'm not quite sure.
I'll let Mr. Cotrell tell, but he is a contractor that builds and designs kitchens. He does residential and commercial work, but he's a contractor.
Is he going to be building anything in this new facility?
Those are all the questions that we would be doing.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Those are all the questions. I was trying to lay out what the standard was and then tell you exactly what he was gonna be doing through his testimony. But he, yes, he, he doesn't, he's not a modular home guy. He doesn't build homes on his property. He has, he's a carpenter contractor who has the storage of his materials, but this particular contractor also designs kitchens. So we have pictures and things that the, Mr. Godfrey has that were his operation now. Because you design kitchens, we've all been to Humphrey's, for instance, in the back room where the kitchens are set up. He's got some kitchens set up where you can pick out and help with your kitchen design.
But would he be building those cabinets there?
He doesn't build those cabinets. He orders those cabinets and they get shipped.
Does he store equipment and?
Well, there's sometimes when the, when the storage of the cabinets that get shipped in, there's sometimes when he has, you know, wood or shingles or something for a job. This particular lot has, that's why, it's a, it's, there's some large indoor store, indoor.
Sounds like this is mostly a sales facility.
Well, why don't I let him explain what he does?
It is a sales facility.
We gotta, we gotta.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Put you under oath first, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi. Yes. Jonathan A. Cotrell. Thank you.
Can you tell us exactly what it is you plan to do in this facility?
Presently, I have an operation that I'd like to move down to this facility. And so presently, we operate, we have an office for our office pool of individuals who handle paperwork, answer the phones, that type of thing. We have a storage area where we store our cabinets or any products that come in that we're gonna be installing. And we have an area where we can cut wood. We have a table saw and a cut saw. And we do assemble light things like railings or maybe make a shelf unit. But for the most part, it's to store the products that we install, have them on hand, call it a warehouse, and a display area. We have cabinet displays, counters, that type of thing. And I'm a general contractor specializing in home remodeling.
And do you store equipment there, trucks and anything you might need to construct a kitchen?
I do have two vehicles. One is a box truck we use for our, the gutter part of our remodeling. And we have a van for moving cabinets or materials to a job.
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's all right. I, again, I think that was what we were gonna get into, but I think the standard again is, you, you do have to accept what was there because to compare the past to the present, I, I can't find it easy if we're taking out a nuclear power plant and we're putting in a daycare, but.
Seen a garage as a nuclear power plant?
No, not at all.
I, I appreciate it.
Not even close.
Thank you.
That would be.
That's very helpful.
That would be, that would be an easier example. For you, you have to accept that it's a licensed garage and the tow terminal with tow trucks. And seasonally, what has happened, because we all buy, buy our mulch there. They, they had a front-end loader and they had stone and mulch, and you could go buy it by the trailer or pickup truck. So it's, it's operated that way, not as neatly as I have seen other garage operate, the garages operate. I will promise you that. And that's historically what it's been. And we believe that renovating two houses and moving on site and using the garage for display of kitchen designs upgrades the property substantially by the nature of a sales building because you clearly need to show everyone the quality of your work. And I believe carpentry, where you do not do 90% of your work on-site but in a home, it's more of a place where my workers gather in the morning, plan, head out with our materials, and come back. Relatively low impact from a zoning standpoint. You can run generally, and most carpenters do until you get big enough, out of your own home in residential areas. There's only the two trucks, so that's not, and that's substantially less than the tow trucks, and the Google map show has historically been there.
How many employees do you have?
On the payroll, we have about 12. And I'd like to add, I think it might be critical for your understanding of what we do on a regular basis. I don't have open hours. So I'm not inviting the general public. I generally have people come who have an appointment. They wanna see the cabinetry. So there's not a lot of walk-in. When I first started in business, I had a showroom with open hours, and I had people coming in all time. That's not how we operate.
I have a question. So do we gotta, kinda, I don't wanna say promise because this is not based on this. Do we got an explanation from you that this lot in front of these showroom, as you call them, with not hours, will turn into containers full of cabinet or stack under a little open tent of wood? A sample of tops for people to come and walk? So all of a sudden, the parking lot looks into Small Home Depot? Because I can't imagine if you've been doing this, eight, 12 employees and all this, eventually you have that. We've all been in business, and we know we could take every inch of our property we can use. Granted, the people before you probably had the nuclear power plant with a garage. The, the question is, are you gonna restrict yourself to those two garages? Are we gonna have this put, I mean, we could put out a part of approval, but what is your vision 10 years from now when you have 50 employees, or 30 employees, if you could find them, or 18 employees?
I will say, I'll let him answer, but I will say, if you look at the plot pen and you look at the buildings, the buildings themselves form a courtyard.
Right.
And because there's really very little setbacks on these pre-existing buildings, there's, we're not spilling out onto neighbors because there's no room there. You're contained, if you will, and it's all blocked with mature trees. There's only the driveway into the courtyard, which really kind of protects everything else. So the sprawl isn't there. The, the reason he wanted the property is because of the size of the garages, which allow his oper- which allow his operation to be inside and not outside. I understand it might have pressure-treated wood or some shingles that you can store outside. There's always been, by the way, a fenced-in area that's the outside storage area that's located that you can see from the maps. And we did talk about, if any questions became an outside storage, that any clean building materials and not junk, but clean building materials that were allowed to be there, like the cars under repair that were there that never quite got repaired, that would only be in that fenced-in area. So, that would be an assurance and a restriction that you could put on that it doesn't expand into areas that aren't currently being occupied in the courtyard and that are not outside of the fenced-in area that is traditionally used for storage. I imagine the fenced-in area might have been some security for cars that were towed that needed work, that were locked up.
It blocked the garage. The fence blocks a view of the garage where, from what I can see, they had an outside storage area where they stored pipe and different sort of things. It's got a little shed roof. A nice little setup. The fence is dilapidated, but we're going to take care of that. My plan is not to expand at any great length. I'll go a little deeper. Take a look. I'm 66 years old this year. Been in business for 40-something years. I'm on my way out. I'm downsizing. Taking the men and the women that have worked with me feverishly for that amount of time. And I'm going to find a little nest, which I found. We're going to make it our home. We're going to move out of North Tiverton. Not that I'm not referring to where I am as North Tiverton. It is North Tiverton, but I am up in the last block. We have a nice operation. But I'm sailing out gracefully. And I want a nice piece of property that can maintain all of what we do, be available to the general public, be on a main route so I can transport close to the highway. When I bought this property or when I signed for this property, it was advertised as a commercial piece of property, which interested me. And when I was told that it wasn't, because of something in the system of reporting was still on the website as commercial in October when it got listed. And not that, you know, this has to happen. I will always make do and I will always find a way. But I stuck with the deal. I made it happen. We just need a little relief to have a lesser of a, you know, minor operation.
Can I ask you a question? So, as the standard... Well, I'm struggling with standard that this board needs to apply. So, if I look at the non-conforming... It says a non-conforming commercial use, which this is, right? It's a commercial operation, auto shop in a residential zone, may only be changed to a use that conforms to the provisions of this ordinance unless one of the following occurs. First is a special use permit is issued by the zoning board of review under the provisions of Article 16, where changed to a similar non-conforming use. So, the board has to make a determination whether this is a similar non-conforming use. If they do that, then the standard is a special use permit. Then it says a use variance is granted by the zoning board review under the provisions of Article 17, where change to any other non-conforming use. Then it says in all cases, whether it's a use permit or a special use permit. So, in all cases, the zoning board must make a determination that the proposed use will be, have the same or lesser undesirable impact upon the surrounding area than the former non-conforming use. So, that catch-all is not the sole definition of what a substantial change of use is. That's saying in both cases, whether it's a use variance or a special use permit, they have to make... It has to make a determination that the... It will have a lesser impact on the neighborhood. But the threshold question is, from my opinion, and correct me if you... Or push back on me if you think I'm wrong, is that they first need to determine whether or not an auto body shop or whatever it was, and we might need some testimony as to what that was, is a similar to what he's now proposing. And if it is similar, then it's a special use permit. If it's not, then it's a use variance. And as you know, a use variance has a higher standard.
But even if a special use permit, it still has to be more desirable to the neighborhood.
I understand both, for both, correct.
You can play semantics again, but what it is, is a mixed use. That's what it is now. It's a mixed use, two residentials and a commercial business, three commercial businesses.
Well, it's a commercial, so it's a mixed-use commercial.
Mixed-use commercial with three businesses pre-existing on the other lot. One of them that... I'm sorry if I offend people, but I'd call close to a junkyard. And a similar use. If you look at our ordinance, the service industry, the service industry of repairing cars, the service industry of repairing homes, the service industry of being a plumber, we generally see that in general commercial under the same type of relief. It's not a bar and I'm asking to be a service industry. That's not similar to me. I think it's similar and it's a service industry. It is a member of our public, of our community that has a business that services others off-site or on-site. This is a little less on-site and more off-site. I will give you that. But it's still that service, general catch of our... When we look at uses, it comes under general commercial and it comes under mixed use. So, once... I think that makes it similar, easier to define, because it's so much less intense to me. And then second is, is it less intense? Not just less intense from my point of view, but less intense from the neighborhood's point of view. And to me, doing zoning as long as we all have, that is traffic, odor, hours of operation, noise, and the things that regulate and define in our zoning ordinance what can and can't be done, when, where and why. The difference between industry and commercial. Noise, traffic and odor, right? So, this is, you know, I don't... A bank may not be similar to an accountant firm if you're a banker or an accountant. But for me, for zoning, they're pretty close to identical, except for the traffic component.
So, you believe it's a special use permit standard?
I believe it's a special use permit with the double... With the double consideration that it not only meets the special use permit criteria, but also that the board finds that, let's call it what it is, I'd rather live next to this than what I was living to next to before. That's less to me. There's a simple way. Ask a five-year-old, is it a better guy to live next to or not? That's the standard, isn't it? Is it more desirable? Is it not... I think it's worded in a negative. Is it not less desirable to the neighborhood? I think that's... I don't think... I'm certainly not saying auto repair shops are a problem, but auto repair shops and tow terminals and, you know, sales of mulch and stone, I think it's tough to argue that that is more desirable next door to me than a carpentry shop, in my opinion. Not my opinion that matters, I guess, but in my opinion. I'll live next door to an auto repair shop. I don't think that's a problem. I just don't think this is more undesirable.
Wait, a little too late for that?
People complain of oils, I mean, the old days, right? Everything comes from the old days, underground tanks.
Did I understand correctly that at the beginning of this presentation, you said you were only interested in a special use permit?
Well, I think it is a special use permit.
But that's what you said, right?
I said that I believe it was a special use permit, and that's how I presented it.
So, you're not asking for a variance at this point?
Well, if the board votes that it's not a similar use, it would go to a use variance. And that is the way the powers-to-be in Tiverton decided to advertise it. I'm not telling... I'm just telling you that's not the way I presented it to the building inspector.
Okay. Another question, unrelated. In the agenda, you indicate that you want to continue a mixed use of the property. And one of the uses appears to be a residential contractor company. What is the other use?
Mixed use, so there's two residential houses. When you have a residential house and a business on the same lot, that's what I define as a mixed use.
Okay.
I think that's what your ordinance defines as a mixed use.
So, there's... So, which building on your drawing is the one that will have the new business?
There's... The drawings marked where the two residential houses are. They remain residential houses. We're not changing anything with those, except to renovate them. Then there's the commercial barn and that other small commercial garage that have been utilized commercial in the past. And we're asking to continue to utilize them commercially in the future, rather than the three uses that were there, to allow the carpentry under the assumption of mine that it is more desirable based on the testimony, Mr. Kotrell and Mr. Godfrey, who went out and viewed the other... Where he is now, what he sees, what it looks like historically was there and what predictably... We don't always have the prediction of a guy coming in saying, "Trust me, this is what it's going to look like." But when we have a guy that operates in town for 30 years at a different location and is sliding it over in pictures of his operation there and at least one letter that I know of him in your file from a neighbor saying, "He's a wonderful neighbor," I'm trying to ease your mind that we do have a little clearer crystal ball than we often have.
Neighbor that encouraged us to grant...
Concerning the map. Could you explain, does this existing garage seems to get bisected by the lot line?
Yes.
And how is that handled since the sale happened recently? Somebody must have pointed that out and...
It was an issue that was rectified with an easement.
This was pre-existing and when it was found by the company that it was over and the plat survey, then the neighbor, who I believe is here and doesn't object to this, got an easement for some access and gave an easement for this corner of the building to be located on the property.
Okay. And the second thing I was... That dotted line that says approximately EOP, I'm not exactly sure what that is. What's the EOP? It's not our survey, is it?
Shouldn't be. I don't know what DOP is. I'm not sure what DOP stands for.
EOP.
If I could see it, I might know.
Oh, Eric, is that edge of pavement?
Oh, edge of pavement?
Edge of pavement.
Oh, EOP?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said DM, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, that's just located the area that is now kind of the courtyard, yeah?
Where the tow truck used to back up.
Right. So, and again, we're not paving more.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is for our counsel. If we literally just determined to believe that what he's saying, this is a similar use, we should be moving on with this if we, right?
You still have to meet the standards of a special use permit if you do. But the first threshold question is, do you believe that an auto body shop as compared to a... Not, excuse me, an auto repair shop as compared to a contractor, home contractor business or kitchen remodel, I guess, is substantially similar?
Okay.
And if you do, then it's a special use permit. If not, then you've got to go to the use variance, which is a higher standard. The reason why we did advertise it is because if the board did decide that it wasn't substantially... We would deny your application. We'd have you come back, file another application for a use permit. So, we thought we were doing you a favor.
I understand that. But it also suggested that it might be a use variance, which I wouldn't have suggested in the first place. And quite frankly, we know the standards of a use variance.
It just wasn't my role to determine whether this was substantially similar or not.
Right. The issue, I get it. But the issue is grandfathered that it's going to be commercial and the issue is going to be whether or not... I mean, I argue whether we need to be here, to be honest with you.
You might have to hang on a few more. Are you going to present testimony as to what's there now? What with the auto shop or not?
What was there? I'm going to have Mr. Kotrell and the neighbor talk about what was there. And then I have Mr. Godfrey to testify regarding the criteria in his special use permit as well as viewing his operation, which helped him decide that this was more desirable because he sees what is going there and actually has a real picture of that. I know you hear from us, but we have an independent person that said, "No, I went and saw it and this is his operation." So, I don't know if you need to vote on similar first before you put me...
I mean, it's up to the board. They might want to hear what was there before, yeah.
All right. So, do you have knowledge of what was there before?
I do.
Okay. And does that knowledge come from not only what you've obtained through building, through buying the property and dealing with the owners and their relatives, but also from your years of living in town and knowledge of the property?
All of that.
Okay. Can you tell me, in your opinion, now, let's not go back 30 years, but for the last five or 10 years, what you know that that property has been used for?
Well, I know that there's been a car repair operation in the small garage and in large vehicle repair in the barn structure, the bigger structure. And then the stone, because we have purchased stone there before and mulch. And I've watched trucks roll in and out. I've used Gas House Hill when Old Colony was there and, you know...
And how about the tow company?
Well, I presently use the tow company personally for things that I need to have towed. So, I'm very familiar with Brett and his operation and his capacity.
And as part of the closing, was some of that recently removed so you could take occupancy?
Yes, most definitely.
Okay. But well within the last year?
Yes. Well, since the end of '22 and the beginning of '23.
And again, you have your current operation at 35 Main Road.
We do.
And you're trying to downsize and move to an area?
Yes.
There's two residential houses. What are your plans with the residential houses?
To remodel those and then put them into the housing pool.
And they're going to stay as single-family residential houses?
Yes, that's their current use now.
So, to the extent that it was a mixed use before and is hopefully going to be a mixed use in the future, as to the residential houses, other than upgrading them, they are staying the same size, same number of bedrooms and are arguably equal to or less undesirable than they were before?
Yep, correct. We're going to remodel the interiors and clean up the exteriors and keep them in the same size with the same amount of bedrooms and rent them to families.
Okay. And to the extent they are fixed up and in better shape, do you have an opinion whether they'd be more desirable for the neighborhood or less desirable for the neighborhood?
Anything that I can do to this property to improve it with interior remodeling and exterior remodeling is going to be a major improvement for what's there now.
Now, what drew your attention to the commercial portion of these buildings? Can you describe the garages to me?
Well, I call the big building where they did large truck repair, I call that a barn. It's like a mini barn. It's got great access. It's got high overhead. So, if I had to get a permit for mezzanine, that's additional storage for the things that we use on a regular basis. And the area where the cars were repaired, it has four... It has two garage doors, but it's actually about four garage stalls, maybe five if I measured it. I don't have the exact dimension, which is going to be a wonderful shop. And then on the end, there's a sun porch, sunroom, that will make a wonderful office. That whole back wall has got glass. I think the ladies will enjoy looking out out of field instead of out on Main Road in Tiverton. And it's just a... It's tight, but we can make it work.
And as far as noise, are you building things outside of the garages in the open other than the use of a hand tool?
Traditionally, we don't build out in the yard. Most of what we do, if anything outside, is we unload for bringing and delivering things to job sites. But as far as any type of construction, no, we're not... We don't build on-site. We're remodeling at people's homes, at their sites.
So, as to noise, do you have an opinion of whether or not this would be more desirable or less desirable?
I can't see any huge noise coming from my use. My trucks are not diesel, they're not large, they're not emitting large plumes of, you know, black exhaust. We're very quiet because we're inside, and when we depart, we just head out. It's not a place where there's going to be a lot of activity in the parking lot besides parking to come in and then leaving.
And I know you tell us the general public is by appointment, but as to your employees, do you keep late hours?
No, actually, I work five days a week. We're not open, or we don't conduct a lot of business on the weekends. I will meet anybody at any time, so I'll meet them on a Sunday if they want, but it's generally one-on-one. Our hours are 8:00 to 4:30, that's when the office runs, Monday through Friday, and there's minimal activity on the weekends, and our work is conducted during the week, Monday through Friday. Eighty percent of it or better is off-site.
Assuming a tow company is in operation basically 24/7, if there's accidents or problems, these hours would arguably be more desirable to neighbors than the hours that would be kept by a 24-hour tow service, is that right?
I would agree to that.
Okay, any reason for outdoor lighting or night lighting on your facility, other than what's there already?
I don't need any more than what code allows, which is on the building now, and every door has a light, but it does nothing, you know, it's not, it's not lit up. I don't intend to light it up.
And other than your gas vehicles and to the extent they put out whatever odor a gas vehicle puts out, anything else you do? Do you work with fiberglass or carbon fiber or things that traditionally have a complaint from neighbors about odor?
I would say not. We mainly work with wood products, although there are products today that are composite-type trim boards and things like that, but generally, that's cut on the job site, because we're not-
But you're not fabricating, you're cutting them, you're not fabricating.
We're not fabricating. We don't build our cabinets, we buy our cabinets, and I've got stock and custom lines. We order those, we bring those in. We might build a shelf, you know, we might build a railing.
Do you know, have you taken the opportunity to look around and see what your original, your immediate neighbors are?
I have, so there's a, the big development down on the gas tank farm-
Starwoods?
We have a nice buffer, a nice vegetative buffer on that boundary line, and then there is a street just to the north, a lot of vegetative cover as well.
But right across the street is a gas station and a small convenience?
Yeah, this is the old Colony Station on that triangle.
And then Willow Daycare, the old Little Bear Lounge, just down the road?
Well, I know it's down there, but we don't see it, certainly the view is not back toward us either.
So this area has commercial directly abutting you and in your immediate vicinity already?
Yeah, it does. And it's a dead end, we're on a, basically, we're on a dead end. Old Main Road got cut off years ago to facilitate the entrance to-
The fire entrance to Starwood?
Yeah, to the Starwood, so there's a cul-de-sac down there.
Do you have any reason to believe that this will adversely affect the character of the neighborhood?
Well, I'm not going to change it, and I'm not going to impede it any more than a garage would.
Believe that your use will be a better, fitted use in a residential area than the prior use?
I would say yes.
Inadequate provisions are made for water, service, sanitary, you have septic systems and they're all, everything you do has to be to DEM code?
Everything is in order, there were no violations when we bought it, and nothing that I know that's been cited to date.
You're not building any facilities that are going to make anything worse, you're just renovating in the footprint of what is there.
Right, everything's going to get renovated and upgraded.
And the comp plan allows for grandfathered, allows for the zoning ordinance grandfathered uses to continue, if similar, and if more desirable?
From what I learned from our zoning official, John at Town Hall.
Well, that's all I have of this witness.
Does anybody on the board have any questions as a witness? Anybody in the audience wish to inquire? Seeing none, sorry, come on up.
Just a few comments about, I'm his present direct, Howard Passwater, P-A-S-W-A-T-E-R. I'm his present abutter, I live at 36 Odet Street, I'm the director of butter. He doesn't start business before 7:30 in the morning. Somebody was asking about saws. They'll run one for about, no more than five minutes every couple of weeks. Never had a problem with them. I just, I'm a retired firefighter. I fought at least two fires at the property he intends to go to. Now, this is 20, 30 years ago, but it was a dump then, and I can't believe that they improved it at any point, and whatever he does there will be an improvement. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for what you've done for retirement.
Is there anyone else that wants to be heard? Are you going to put on Mr. Hool?
I have Mr. Godfrey that I'll put on very quickly. I think in the past, Mr. Godfrey has appeared before you as an expert, the owner of Newport Appraisal Group. I would ask if you could swear him in as such?
I do.
Were you accepting him as an expert?
Yeah, we've appeared before us many times, we've accepted you as an expert. Anybody have any problem with that?
No.
Nate, in reading the ordinance, you and I have discussed the standard to go forward in the criteria tonight?
We have, yeah.
So one of the issues seems to be that the use that's proposed is similar to the use that was there as it relates to zoning, and then also, does it meet the special use permit? Is that your task? Is that what we hired you to discuss tonight?
Those are the two key components here, yeah.
And in so doing that, you have had the opportunity to review the site, to review pictures of the site, to read, to get our historical perspective on the site of what was there, as well as to look at the pictures and the operation of his current site on Main Road, is that right?
Correct, yeah.
And have you had the opportunity to formulate any opinions regarding, first, as to whether from a zoning point of view this is similar, and second, whether it meets the special use criteria, including the rider, that it is not less desirable to the neighbors than the prior use?
I've got opinions on both.
I bet you do. Can you give me your opinions quickly and somewhat of what you did to formulate those opinions?
Sure. Madam Chair, nice to see you again, board members. It's been a while, I think pre-COVID, so I'm glad to be back.
We'll come back.
Site inspection, review of the ordinance, review of the comp plan. It's one of these properties, I've been driving by it for 33 years and stopped and actually put real eyeballs on it. I had some older pictures of it. I think, I think everything you've heard tonight is getting you where you need to be. I think I can fine-tune it and get you the thinking you need. With regards to your seven, section seven, change of use, the real key words here are proposed use, especially in all cases, the zoning board review must make a determination that a proposed use will have the same or a lesser desirable impact on the surrounding area than the former non-conforming use. To my way of thinking, I view this as a before and an after scenario, what existed before, what will exist after if you were to grant the special use permit. I see three things from use standards, use standpoint that I would consider. The residential use exists, it's going to exist, it's similar, very similar, it's the same use. The garages are going to go from a service use to the after scenario, another service use. The third component being the yard, there's going to be the normal yard activities you would see. The benefit that you get here, in my opinion, is that the yard uses, which are really the ones that have an opportunity currently to impact the neighbors, will be significantly diminished, and to my way of thinking, from a land use perspective, improved. So that your after scenario is consistent with the proposed uses as far as similarity, I believe you're going to see the yard uses especially be an improvement. What goes on in the building is a, or the buildings besides the residential uses is a direct, you know, correlation to the yard, it's improved. One of the things that drives me crazy down in Middletown is Aquinic Avenue, where materials, yeah, it got approved about 20 years ago. It's a huge pile of sand and mulch right now, and for the last month, for the last 25 years, it's blown dust into the residential neighborhood that it abuts. I think it's incompatible land uses. If you're eliminating a mulch pile, if you're eliminating dust from this facility, you're improving the standard of the neighborhood. I'm keen on that. In addition to the noise, I can only believe that this use is less noise as compared to what goes on at a typical automotive facility. My understanding of his cabinetry is, what's a cabinet? It's a lightweight box, they show up box, they come off a truck, there may be either a hand truck. I've seen forklifts used to move cabinets, but there's much less going on in that yard that could be a negative impact. So when you look at 7-1, I, it's strange wording, a lesser undesirable impact, I would take that to the affirmative, yes, it'll be a lesser undesirable impact, these proposed uses. And I would also say to you, they're similar in those regards. With that thinking, and you look at your special use permit criteria, the public convenience and welfare will be served, that's, you know, a legal standard, and we've got no issues with the uses, so that's met. Will not be detrimental to public health, safety, morals, or welfare. I think a nice, clean service operation will check the boxes there. Will be compatible with neighboring uses and will not adversely affect the general character of the area. I would say to you, if approved, the special use permit and executed, it'll be an improvement to the general area. Will not create a nuisance in the neighborhood, nor hinder or endanger vehicular or pedestrian movement. It is a sort of a unique cul-de-sac, dead end type thing. I sat there for 10 minutes today, and another car came down that section of, I guess it's Old Main Road at that point, so it's, there's no issue there. Adequate provision for water, service, sanitary, sewage disposal, and fire protection. We've heard the testimony that no DEM, OWTS issues. Will be compatible with the comp plan for the town of Tiverton. This is really the land use hinge where this hangs. I couldn't find anything in your land use element that suggested this was inappropriate. I think, I think it's an improvement to the site, I think the uses are less intensive. I'm very comfortable from a land use perspective. I think it meets all your criteria for a special use permit.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the public wish to be heard? Anything you want to say?
I think we've said enough, you don't want to question, but thank you.
Okay, the hearing is now going to be closed, and we'll begin our deliberations. How's everybody feel about this one?
I think they meet the standard for a special use permit. The question is, is special use permit proper here? And I'm not sure to determine that, but I think I'd rather call it special use than-
Me too.
Use variance, because-
We have to agree first, is it the same thing, moving from surface to surface? Are we changing anything here? And I don't think they are.
Is it a similar non-conforming?
It is absolutely similar.
Service uses they list in their ordinance, most of them are obsolete, but I'm not sure that that's going to help us at all, but it, I guess I would say we'll go, I would go with a special use.
Thank you.
And I think they meet all the requirements.
Yeah, I feel this. I mean, when I was talking about this, thinking about it, you know, what are substantially similar, you know, like that an apple and orange, they're both fruits, you know, but they're kind of different. I mean, this is a service business where, I mean, obviously, the residential components remain residential components. The, I mean, I certainly think it's less offensive than a junkyard, and that's not exactly the same as saying that it's similar, but, I mean, I could, I could see that it's similar. I would be comfortable saying that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable saying that also.
George?
I am totally for it. Let's make a motion and move on.
You're totally for it?
Yeah, let's make a motion. David, make a motion, please.
Would you like to say something?
I was just going to say that I, the gentleman who joined him, had it seemed to tell it the idea. By itself, it seems to meet standards to me.
Well, so do we all agree that this is substantially similar to its previous use?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and who wants to make the motion?
Well, I think if you're making the motion that you're granting a special use permit, you automatically assume that it's substantially, so it's substantially similar, and you're going to apply the standard of the special use permit. I would caution the board that we need to have findings of fact for each of those elements. To speed things along, I would recommend that you adopt the findings of fact as testified by Mr. Godfrey as to each of the elements that were listed, because you do need to meet the elements as listed in your ordinance.
Well, I would, I would make that motion. I clearly think that the public welfare will be served, not detrimental to the public health, safety, or morals. It's compatible with the neighboring uses of gas stations and other businesses. It's not going to create a nuisance, everything is going to be contained within that yard. There have been adequate provisions for water, sewage, sanitary, and fire protection. There have been no complaints, no violations, and it's compatible with the comprehensive community plan. Clearly, it's going to be an improvement over what's presently there, and I would move to grant a special use permit.
I second the motion.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Good luck.
Good luck.
You won.
Thank you.
Yep.
Want a break? We're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, the next matter on the agenda is a dimensional variance. A petition's been filed by Court Chappelle for Lee Feldman, Post Office, Box 8, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, 82871, for a dimensional variance at 308 Riverside Drive, Tiverton, Plat 301, Lot 134, in an R40 zoning district, for enlargement of a residential structure on a non-conforming lot, which is an addition. Relief is sought under Article 14, Nonconforming Development, Section 5, and Article 5, Section 1, District Dimensional Regulation Setback.
Good evening again, I'm going to talk quick on this one. I hope you find this easy. Ms. Feldman owns property, her address is Riverside. Those of you that are on Riverside know you can't get there from here.
Right.
Her house is at the top of the hill, and some of her neighbors, as well as her, enter through Sunderland. If Sunderland were the street of record and the primary street, there are no variances required for front yard, no variances required for rear yard, no variances required for sides, and no lot coverage variance, we would be grabbing what they call a building permit without talking to you. But because Riverside is the address and because it is the primary street, Riverside is the front yard. Riverside is not centered in its right-of-way, and Riverside is currently 39 feet from the building. We are asking for a small addition to a house that is 20 by 24, 480- We are asking for a small addition to a house that is 20 by 24, 480 square feet, slightly bigger than what we call hotel rooms. We're asking for that by going four foot closer to the water. In doing that, it is 10 feet from the property line. When you take a pre-existing lot that's 6,357 square feet and divide it into the R30, I think it is, or 40 that is necessary there, you get that formula to reduce everything. But a front yard can only be reduced to 25 feet, and because this is a, a rear yard could be reduced to 10. This would meet the rear yard if it was a rear yard. It doesn't meet it as a double front yard. So we are asking for a 15-foot variance from the mathematical reduced front yard of 25 feet to 10 feet. But I am telling you again that it is still 35.9 feet from the macadam, because there's that much land between the edge of Riverside and the property line. Also on the plat that you saw, if you look immediately to your left and immediately to your right, which would be north and south, this is no closer and still further away with the addition than the two houses that are to the north and south. They actually appear to be encroaching, because I think there might have been a survey issue in the past. So because it's such a small house of 480 square feet, we think it's the least relief necessary. Note that there currently on the waterside is a deck that's nine feet by the width of the house. Most of the addition's just on top of the deck. Basically, the deck goes from nine feet wide to 12 feet wide, then half the deck gets finished in for her kitchen, and the other half is a deck. There's a small area on the side that requires no side yard relief, which is the stairway, because currently that elevated deck has no emergency access, and there's only one way in and one way out of the house. This gives a deck with a second stairway, second egress, which is certainly safer for fire code, and we were able to put it on the side of the house where no variances are requested. So it really should be that easy, and it's a 15-foot front yard variance where 25 feet is required because of the technicality that Riverside is called her front yard. And I have her for any questions you have, but I believe it meets the standard, that there's no hardship caused by her, it's the least relief necessary, and deny the same would be more than a mere inconvenience. I do also have, I believe you have a copy of it, but I got a letter from the neighbor immediately to the north encouraging you to grant the application.
I don't think we got that letter. At least, I didn't get that letter. Court, when you're, in your application, you've asked for a dimensional variance and enlargement of a residential nonstructure on a nonconforming lot? What does that mean?
It's a nonconforming lot.
I get that part. What's a nonstructure?
I don't know if that reads that way. If I can read my own writing, I'll look for it. It is the structure and the deck. There's a couple of things, not that it matters, because we're not at lot coverage, but interestingly, on the front of the house, there's a, we don't usually count patios, but this house has a foundation with an elevated patio that's being removed. So the footprint of the house is not really increasing, and that non-residential structure is being removed.
You don't really answer my question.
I'm not.
What's, what's a residential nonstructure?
I'm trying to find where that's...
Here, you want to link mine?
No, I believe you, I'm just trying to...
Dimensional variance and enlargement of a residential structure, non is crossed out on my...
Nonconforming development.
Oh, it's not crossed out on mine.
Nonconforming development, Section 5, District Dimensional Regulations.
It's, yeah, it's under...
Oh, I see.
Yeah. It's, it was, it's crossed out on mine. I don't know if I did that or I knew what you meant, but it's a...
Dimensional variant enlargement of a residential...
Structure, non is crossed out on my copy.
Oh, okay.
On a nonconforming lot. So it's a residential structure on a nonconforming lot.
Right.
The calculation, I did check with the, because of the nonconforming lot, you know, you have that proportional, the math does check out. I think it's a 16% reduction, I believe.
Yeah. It still comes out at 14% or so, or 25%, 14.2, I think, where 25 would be allowable under the formula. So it really would be, if you just said that, that's an interesting rule to call Riverside the front, and Sunderland is clearly where the front door is, where the driveway is, where the road is, no relief would require.
And how is that determined?
Whenever you have, because Sunderland is not a public street, it's a right-of-way. So technically, even the, even the address is Riverside, right?
Yes.
So when the address is Riverside, if you're on two fronts, your ordinance says pick the prominent front. And Riverside is certainly more prominent than Sunderland, but Sunderland is marked, not even as a street, it's marked as a right-of-way for, for everybody. But it's just, the ordinance creates a reason we need to be here that's logical. It just doesn't really create a practical problem with the relief, if that makes sense.
So do I understand that you're seeking to basically incorporate a deck into, as part of the house?
The deck right now is nine feet by 20 feet and runs all the way across, little past the deck and turns back to the chimney. Half of that deck to the right is going to be now an enclosed kitchen. But because we needed the space, a nine-foot kitchen was difficult, so the architect asked if we could get it approved for 12 feet wide. So that kitchen now is 12 feet wide by 10. And then what was the deck is still going to be a deck, because it looks out over the water there, and that would be approximately a 12 by 12 deck, because it was the other half of the house that's still remaining decked. But we brought the nine feet out to the 12 as well.
But you moved the deck around, basically, right? Did I get that right?
Well, the deck was on the house like this now. We took this half and finished it and made it inside and left this half.
Okay.
But we added stairs over here.
I see.
And we brought all of it three feet closer, because there was already a retaining wall there, that there's not enough space for anything usable back there anyway, and the retaining wall made sense that that was a natural breaking point for where the land drops. So I...
It's literally the deck better than what she has now. Does she have a second exit?
Do you have a question?
I'm just, I'm following you on their deck, the way they did it, it really looks much better than what they have right now.
Okay, because I can't hear you. I didn't know if you were talking to him or talking to yourself.
I'm talking to myself usually, but that's beside the point. No, I'm just saying the deck she had right now, the deck in the house right now have no second egress. The way they designed it right now, they enclosed a portion of the deck, and it looks, on this plan, more safely to be living in this house as a full-time.
And we could go to the side without a variance. If that required a variance on the sideline, then we'd have to weigh whether it was the least relief necessary, but the safest way to get to that deck, knowing we didn't need a variance, made sense.
Anyone on the board have any question?
One question. Are you connecting to the sewer, new sewer system?
Yes. Yes.
On Riverside Drive?
Mm-hmm.
That's a yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I went down there today, and that's a very narrow street, very narrow. I'm surprised that you could get trucks down there to do any kind of work. It's, it's pretty much...
Sunderland, yeah.
It's small. You're right on the, are you on the waterside?
No.
Question?
No, we're up on that side, so we don't use Riverside, because you, you have to traverse up the hill. Three or four houses before her house, Sunderland cuts off and cuts behind all those houses up on the hill, which is also a very narrow street. It's very difficult to get trucks on.
Yeah.
And again, it's, it's kind of a right-of-way and a easement through all the deeds. It's not even platted. I do have a letter from John J. DePointe Jr. He resides at 318 Riverside Drive, which is the immediate butter, immediate butter to the north. Leah Feldman, the owner of 308 Riverside Drive, which is next door to me, has shared with me her renovation plans, which I not only support but also highly encourage. I want to let you know that my wife and I fully support her plans, and we look forward to seeing an updated addition to our neighborhood.
Thank you. How long have you lived there?
I don't, it's, I don't live there right now.
Oh.
It's uninhabitable.
We weren't sworn in either.
Yeah.
Yes, I do. Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Yep.
However, this is for you. This is...
Oh, yeah. This is for me.
This is for you.
When it's finished, yes.
Right. In Portsmouth, I can't get by anywhere without saying it's not an Airbnb.
No.
Yeah, well...
No, 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 no.
You read the sub, you read the subtitles.
This is, this is her summer home.
This is for me. This is my first real house.
And how many bedrooms are in it?
It's two bedrooms.
And it's a single family?
It's very small, yes.
Yes. It's very cute.
Yes, thank you. It's going to be a cuter.
Anyone in the audience have any questions? Want to be heard? Seeing none. Are we ready to discuss this?
Yep.
Meetings now closed and we'll begin our deliberations on your request.
I'll start it. I usually struggle with this part of town, that we fogland Riverside, how we all of a sudden, things explode and get tighter. I have to say that Sunderland Road and given these houses on that hill, even if she, she could eat double the size of that room, wouldn't affect anybody, because she is so high, it is hard to believe her mailbox is on Riverside Drive.
Yeah.
So it's, for me, this, this project, again, I struggle with these small streets. I went down with my car, and I'm not bragging, I went down with my Cadillac, I had to back all the way to Riverside Drive, because there's no place to turn. So I have no idea how this works right now, and I used to down that area a lot. But this project by itself should not be opposed by anybody, just the fact it does not, you can't even see it, you cannot even, doesn't really affect anybody in the neighborhood, and honestly, it's going to make this little, I don't know, what do you call it now, after I looked at it? It really fits the neighborhood, it's waterfront property, and you know, good for you. I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, my only concern would have been if by expanding property, they would have reduced impervious property and, and all the other factors, the environmental impact, and as long as they're connecting to the sewer system, I, there's no problem, as far as I'm concerned. So I, I think they meet all the other requirements, or actually, meet all the requirements.
Yep.
And I...
Well, I think that the hardship is due to the unique circumstances of, of the property, the fact that the address should be on one street and it's on another, that's not under her control. I mean, it's a steep hill, there's no way you could get up from there. And it's not due to any physical or economic disability on, on your part. The hardship is not a result of anything that you've caused or you've caught, done to have caused. It certainly is not going to alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive town plan. And it is the least relief necessary in order for you to have a kitchen that you can cook in. And I think by not granting it would amount to more than a mere inconvenience for you. So I would make a motion for those reasons and the reasons that you've presented in testimony to grant the variance.
Second?
Second by Mr. Schobert. All those in favor? Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Have a wonderful evening.
So now we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn the Tiverton Board of Review meeting?
No. This is an appeal from...
It's not a separate?
No. From the planning board.
Oh, okay. I've been corrected. The next matter on our agenda is an appeal from the decision of the zoning official regarding cease and desist notices that have been issued against Highland Ridge Farm. I believe that Mr. Schobert has filed a recusal in this matter, and so he will be not participating. And...
That is correct. I have read, I filled out a form with town clerk to recuse myself on this matter.
You have to put the reason. Okay. So your excuse, you shouldn't leave the table, as they say. Thank you, Ed. Well, the next matters, there are five matters. Appeals from the decision of the zoning official, a cease and desist notice firstly regarding the earth removal license. An appeal has been filed by Highland Ridge Farm LLC, 536 Highland Road Rear, Tiverton, Rhode Island, Plat 310, Lot 112, of cease and desist notice issued by the town, Tiverton Building Zoning Official on March 22, 2023. The cease and desist notice was, was issued pursuant to zoning ordinance 17, 18, Section 6B. The appeal of the cease and desist notice is pursuant to zoning ordinance, Article 15, Section 4A.
Cessation. You're on it.
All right. The second regards a cease and desist notice regarding survey plan. The third matter is a cease and desist notice regarding retail or wholesale sales and/or storage. And the last one is a cease and desist notice for a special use permit.
Earth removal.
I did that one earlier. And the last one is earth removal and quarrying, mining. Is there someone here on behalf of the Pollack?
Yes, hi. Good evening, everybody. My name is Joshua Parks of Adler, Pollack &amp; Sheehan, PC, and counsel representing the appellant.
Before we get started, I wanted to make sure that we are all here in agreement on the record as, as it exists, which would be the five cease and desist orders and attachments, your notice of appeal and memo in support of that, your memo and exhibits, the town's memo and exhibits, and no other written filings that I'm aware of.
That, that's correct, Madam Chair. Just, I want to make sure we're on the same page. There were the five cease and desist notices that, that we received. We then filed five separate appeals.
Yes.
And then there was supplemental briefing done, I believe, you know, I filed kind of one omnibus brief related to everything, and the building official filed, I think, five additional supplemental briefs.
I think that's right.
Okay, great. We're on the same page.
We're on the same page? All agreed?
Five memorandums with, with exhibits.
Yes. Okay.
That's going to be the official record.
Great.
Okay. Now, is there someone here representing the butters?
Yes.
You have no filings that are in the record, correct?
No.
Okay, well, we'll hear from you later. Thank you.
Identify myself.
Okay. So why don't the parties identify themselves for the record? And then I think what, what I'd like to do is give everybody an opportunity to give a brief opening statement, and then the appellant can prepare its case, put its case on.
Sure. Would you like me to re-identify myself?
Yeah.
Sure.
We'll do it in order.
Joshua Parks of Adler, Pollack &amp; Sheehan, PC, counsel for appellant Highland Ridge Farm LLC.
Thank you.
Todd Romano for the building and zoning official for the town of Tiverton.
And sir?
handle SOUZA, Kelly, Providence, representing butters and neighbors with proximity.
Thank you. Now, I think that we are all in agreement that for purposes of this hearing, we're required to assume that Highland Farms Quarry is a pre-existing nonconforming use, which is grandfathered in because of the, its activities predated the enactment of our zoning code.
Sure. So if I may, Madam Chair, you know, that's certainly a, you know, we, we consider it to be a pre-existing nonconforming use, but more fundamentally, and, and really what's going to be the thrust of my argument, so, you know, at the, at the risk of giving you a preview of coming attractions, it's, it's our opinion that this board doesn't have any jurisdiction to hear the cease and desist notices in the first instance, because that, you know, underlying predicate issue of whether this is a pre-existing nonconforming use is something that the building official is without jurisdiction to determine, therefore this board is without jurisdiction to hear, and is really something that's more... this board is without jurisdiction to hear and is really something that's more properly brought before the Superior Court.
I understand your position, but in terms of educating the public that's here, I want the public to be aware that as a matter of law, the zoning board does not have the authority, the jurisdiction to determine whether or not there is a pre-existing non-conforming use. That is solely up to the Superior Court. But, on that, I think we all agree. There are some differences as to whether the town has the authority to issue cease and desist on a pre-existing non-conforming use and that's going to be the subject of today's hearing. So, take it away.
Sure, and just kind of one housekeeping item, if I may. My, you know, my, my case consists of my arguments, so I, I know, I keep wanting to say, Your Honor.
Oh, thank you.
I'm used to...
That ship has sailed.
Too much time spent, spent in court, but you know, to the extent you had mentioned doing opening statements and then diving into the case itself, you know, really my, my argument is, you know, is my argument in my case, so I'm happy to just proceed from there.
You can just jump right into the pool if you wish.
Great, I, I appreciate that and I will, I will take the invitation. So, thank you, everybody, for, for being here tonight. As you know, we're here on the appeal of the five cease and desist notices that were just detailed by Madam Chair. All, all five of these notices arise out of the same nucleus of operative fact, so I'm going to address them, you know, holistically together and then taking a couple of points for each, for each notice individually thereafter. First and foremost, and, and as I just mentioned, this board is without jurisdiction to rule on whether or not appellant's coring activity constitutes a pre-existing non-conforming use and so all five of the notices which flow from that determination must be dismissed. Each of the five notices seeks to avoid this truth by assuming that appellant's coring is pre-existing and non-conforming before then claiming various violations of the provisions of the town's code and ordinances. However, each one of the five violations stems from appellant's coring, which is outside the bounds of what this zoning board is able to determine. We've cited in our appeals papers and the supplemental briefing, the precedential case law that makes clear that all these determinations regarding a pre-existing non-conforming use is not a question for either the town's official or the zoning board, but is properly before the Superior Court. Therefore, because the zoning board is without jurisdiction to determine the necessary predicate from which all of the alleged, the alleged violations flow, the cease and desist notices must be dismissed. Of course, the town knows this and in fact, this very board has considered and ruled on this issue. You might recall the building official previously issued cease and desist notices in, I believe in late 2020, to this same appellant regarding a coring activities at this very same property. At that hearing on those prior cease and desist notices, this board recognized, quote, "The jurisdictional question is within the sole province of the Superior Court and we do not have subject matter jurisdiction," end quote, and dismissed those prior notices. The prior cease and desist also sought to restrict appellant's ability to quarry and expand its granite operations, much as the current cease and desist notices do. Nothing's changed in the intervening two years that would vest the zoning board with the power necessary to determine appellant's ability to quarry its property and these five new notices must be dismissed for the same reasons that the prior notice was dismissed back in February of '21. It's puzzling that the town decided to try and circumscribe appellant's granite coring before the zoning board in this manner. As all parties have repeatedly cited in their briefs, the topic of appellant's granite coring is already the subject of a lawsuit currently pending in the Newport County Superior Court, which is the very same court that, that will probably ultimately hear any appeal of the five notices at issue here if the board doesn't do what we contend they should do and, and dismiss it on jurisdictional grounds. Based on the prior ruling of the zoning board, the town knows that the Superior Court is the appropriate venue. The building official himself in a supplemental briefing has sought to interject those Superior Court proceedings into this cease and desist hearing, providing copies of appellant's discovery responses and arguing both the sufficiency and meaning of those same responses. To what end is not certain as this board is not the Superior Court. The Superior Court case is in the middle of fact discovery, fact discovery is not over. It is not, it's inappropriate for the building official to selectively reference discovery materials to this board, which is both without jurisdiction to hear these claims and does not have the benefit of the entirety of the court record in any event. It's simply more evidence supporting the fact that the building official's complaints are properly before the court and not before this board. Even assuming, for sake of argument, that this board has jurisdiction to consider the violations as alleged in the cease and desist notices, binding Supreme Court precedent makes clear that the town's attempt to restrict appellant's coring operations are impermissible. I'm of course referring to the town of West Greditch versus Cardy Realty case that has been repeatedly brought up and cited to the board in all of the party's papers. Cardy makes clear that extractive industries such as appellant's are regulated differently. The law of diminishing assets may permit an owner to expand the perimeters of a non-conforming use, that's Cardy at 362. Several jurisdictions, including our own Supreme Court, declined to prohibit the expansion of coring in such cases because, quote, "The land is considered a diminishing asset and the use need not be restricted to the precise geographical area where extraction activities were going on when the lot became non-conforming," end quote. Accordingly, the town's attempts to prevent appellate from coring must fail. The building official in its supplemental briefing leans heavily on an unreported Superior Court decision, that's the South County Sand and Gravel versus South Kingston case. That case does not change the Cardy analysis. First, unlike the binding Supreme Court Cardy case, South County is a lower Superior Court decision and is unreported. Furthermore, if you review the history of that case, the decision was appealed to the Supreme Court and then ultimately the parties reached a settlement. Finally, that lower court simply misreads the structures of Cardy. Cardy clearly held that a town may not restrict a landowner's extractive operations, assuming it meets that three-part test set forth therein. South County, which was never ultimately passed upon or ruled on by the Supreme Court, impermissibly expanded that restriction and the zoning board should not make the same error. Again, this board has no jurisdiction to make the necessary first determination whether appellant's activities constitute a pre-existing non-conforming use and therefore the notices must be dismissed. However, the notices are additionally defective for each of the following reasons. And I apologize, my numbering on these notices is going to be a little different than yours I, than how they appear on the agenda. I received the notices in a, in a different order, but so I'll, I'll call them out. The first of the notices, which is E on the agenda, concerns earth removal and coring mining. First, the cease and desist notice itself fails to identify what provision of the zoning code appellant has allegedly violated and therefore must fail. Second, and has been mentioned, the notice must fail because the building official concedes that appellant has a pre-existing non-conforming use but then alleges an impermissible expansion of that use. In order to determine whether a use has been expanded, it must first be determined what that use is, which this board is without authority to do. Per Cardy, it's the landowner's intent that serves as the controlling factor in any expansion and the evidence shows that it's appellant's intent to use the property for the same coring activities to which, to which it has been already put for the past more than 90 years. Third, the building official relies upon aerial photos taken from a GIS website to opine that appellant has impermissibly expanded its operation. This analysis misses the point of Cardy, which made clear that expansion is permitted into other areas of a landowner's property than those which have, than simply those which have been previously worked. In the situation of Cardy, which involved the graveling operation, the court noted that the entire point is to continue to extract gravel, therefore restricting operations to what had occurred before would, would be essentially be a nullity. The GIS photos therefore are of no relevance to the determination of whether or not appellant has impermissibly expanded its use. The building's official reliance upon these photographs, which indicate only a very specific snapshot in time, is misplaced. Cardy also requires that expansion of a non-conforming use cannot have a substantially different impact on the surrounding neighborhood than what has occurred before. Appellant has submitted a sworn affidavit from the prior owner of the property detailing the coring operations that have been taking place on that site for nearly 100 years. There have been no sworn affidavits or other evidence submitted to the board suggesting differing operations than what occurred prior. Appellant has simply continued those operations and the residential neighborhood that's grown up around the property has complained. There's no evidence to suggest that appellant is conducting its coring operations any differently than what has previously taken place. The building official also suggests that the extractive use of the property has been abandoned. That contention spurs us. Cardy additionally recognizes that extractive industries change over time and a quarry will not be deemed abandoned simply because its, its use has slowed or even stopped for a period, and again, that's binding Supreme Court precedent. The building official has also submitted a report from a geologist into evidence. This report's remarkable both for its lack of conclusiveness and lack of applicability to the matter at hand. The report delves into imagined effects on groundwater discharge, yet does not indicate any actual testing or evidence of any ill effect. The report anticipates that a brook running through the property might pick up surface water drainage, the geologist appears to view overburdened stockpiles and he assumes that groundwater could be affected. At least the report confirmed that appellant is in fact coring granite. The report does not indicate any evidence or risk to, to either people or the environment. Next, the earth removal license, which is violation A on the agenda. This cease and desist contends that appellant's engaged in earth removal without a license, allegedly in contravention of chapter 38, Article 3, Division 2, Section 38-8 of the town's ordinances. And I'll, I'll do this for, for all of the notices, but I'm just going to incorporate all prior arguments so I don't have to restate it all for you here now. Second, this alleged violation does not apply to Highland's activities per the plain language of the zoning ordinance. Highland is engaged in granite coring, not earth removal. Chapter 38, Article 3, Division 1, Section 38-56 specifically excludes the, quote, "extracting, removing, digging, mining, or coring of limestone, lime rock, or granite," end quote, from regulation under this article. Highland simply doesn't need a license for what it's doing.
Mr. Parks, I'm sorry to interrupt. Doesn't the expert report indicate that in order for him to quarry, he's removing earth to get to the granite?
He's, he's moving some topsoil off, none of that is being removed from the property and I think the, I think the expert report says that.
But doesn't the earth, earth removal license require you to get a license before you do so? And removing any earth out of property for any type of, whether it's coring or not?
So this gets a little bit to the accessory use piece, I think that, that is a, that is a, you know, accessory lower use that is, you know, necessary as part of his granite removal operations and I don't think that he needs a, a earth removal license to pull that topsoil off the granite.
Okay, that's your position, thank you.
Yep, that's the position. To the extent that the building official references fill on documents produced in discovery in the Superior Court case to constitute earth removal, he is mistaken as fill is simply very small pieces of crushed granite, which further illustrates the danger of trying to inject the Superior Court proceedings before this board. Furthermore...
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Those are documents filed in court in a pending case, signed by your client. Are you saying that the board cannot rely on those documents in this case, making its decision?
I'm saying that what we're witnessing is the danger of conflating what should be in the Superior Court with what's before this board. And Superior Court has the benefit of, you know, all of the, all of the part, all of the discovery responses of all of the parties, you know, depositions haven't occurred in that case yet, there will then be expert discovery, I expect will do dispositions, right, and that case will proceed, you know, apace into its conclusion.
But those are sworn, sorry, let me interrupt, but those are sworn documents signed by your client indicating numerous things.
Well, I think, I think technically interrogatories are sworn responses, documents, document productions are just, you know, give me what you've got, here's what I've got.
But there were admissions as well.
There are, there are answers to requests for admissions which, you know, I think are pretty, pretty narrow.
I just want to understand, are you saying that this board cannot rely upon that in this proceedings?
No, I'm saying the information contained in those is accurate, what I'm saying is that it's, it's illustrative of the fact that we're just in the wrong place.
Okay. So you're not, you're not questioning the validity of those documents, you're not saying that...
No, the information contained in those documents is accurate.
Accurate, okay, thank you.
Furthermore...
I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry.
No, no, all right. Furthermore, even if this section of the zoning ordinance applied to Highland's activities, it'd be an inappropriate use of the town's police power to enact a licensing requirement decades after the use had been established, as is the case here. Finally, section 3857 of the chapter addresses the proper vehicle for challenging an allegedly improper earth removal operation, quote, "Suit may be instituted in the Superior Court," end quote. That's not what's happened here.
Can I ask you a question on that, because I read that in your brief? So first I suit, sorry. So it says suit maybe, maybe filed on behalf of the town. Doesn't say it must be filed on behalf of the town.
Doesn't say it must be, but I think, you know, reading that, reading that section of the ordinance kind of in, in toto, it also, it also doesn't suggest any other, you know, vehicle, so, so my reading of that ordinance is that if the town believes that earth, the earth removal license is, is the issue, then the proper way to do that is to go to Superior Court.
But isn't the town, through its building official, indicating that they believe that a license is necessary, the building official issues a notice violation, we have this type of hearing to, for administrative finality purposes, we develop the record and then if we have to enforce the ordinance or the notice of violation, then we go to the Superior Court to enforce it, isn't that an alternate route that can be used?
I think it's, that's an alternate reading of that, but again, I think that the, the fact that this ordinance references, you know, hey, go direct to Superior Court, I think that, that shows the, the proper path here.
But it doesn't say go directly, it says may go to Superior Court.
It does say may, but again, you know, without providing any, any other alternative.
Thank you.
The third cease and desist notice, which is number, letter B on the agenda regarding the survey plan, alleges that appellant has failed to file a survey plan as required by Article 14, Section 6 of the zoning code. Once again, I'm going to incorporate all prior arguments, including in particular the argument that the board's without jurisdiction to consider whether any such plan is required because this board cannot determine whether appellant's activity is a pre-existing non-conforming use. This viol, this cease and desist notice is just an attempt to en-run around the town's inability to strip Highland of its pre-existing activities. The building official in his brief leans heavily on a case called Rico versus Exeter. That case involving earth removal is inapplicable to the current case involving appellant's granite quarry. Rico simply stands for the proposition that a zoning board is, as I've said a few times, without jurisdiction to determine a prior non-conforming use. As set forth in Cardy, a town may not restrict a landowner's extractive activities due to the doctrine of diminishing assets. This zoning provision, which was enacted decades after the coring use began on the property, cannot be used to prevent the coring that continues. Moving on to the special use permit, which is D on your agenda. This notice contends that appellant has failed to apply for a special use permit pursuant to Article 16, Section 3B of the zoning ordinance. Once again, appellant specifically incorporates all prior argument. In particular, Cardy requires that the town look to a landowner's objective intent in its coring activities, not the size or scope of the physical area that has previously been worked, which is what this notice impermissibly does. Cardy permits a landowner to work its property. To the extent South County suggests otherwise, that case is both not binding and impermissibly contrary to Cardy's mandates. Appellant reiterates that the town's evidence consists of its building official looking at GIS photographs, which miss the point of Cardy regarding the ability of an extractive industry to continue regard, its extraction activities beyond just the confines of what occurred before.
Mr. Parks, what do you believe is in the record that indicates the intent of the, either this landowner or the successor landowner where the coring activity was to occur? What's in the record for this, for this board to determine where that intent is?
Sure, so I think we have the affidavit of Ms. Jerome, which, you know, talks about the fact that they were coring their property for years.
I'm sorry, does that affidavit indicate where on the property?
I, I, I believe it makes clear that the intent is to quarry the, the property.
The entire property?
Yeah, I mean, obviously there's part of it that I think is subject to, you know, wetland destructions now, but you know, the, the natural point is to continue coring the, this part of the property that they could.
So...
And I think that, and I think that is, that is in accord with, you know, the situation that happened in Cardy, which was, you know, this company bought the property, I think it was back in 1966 or something like that and then, you know, work happened over different parts of property over the time, sometimes really pausing for, in many cases, years and then all of a sudden in 2001, you know, the issue was raised. It's, it's a similar situation to what we have here.
So, Ms. Jerome's affidavit indicates the real estate comprising approximately 170 acres has been utilized by the Jerome family for farming and mining purposes since 1930.
Right, and I think, and we're...
Let me finish.
Sure.
And then it says a por, I'm sorry, then it says a portion of this real estate comprising approximately 90 acres and bounded by Budway, Highland Road, Main Road and old Bogomash Road was sold to Thomas Chase in 2016. I guess the problem I have with your affidavit is how do I determine based upon it, the entire parcel was 170, okay, where she said mining activity occurred and then a portion of it was sold to Mr. Chase in 2016? Where in this affidavit can I determine whether or not where Mr. Chase, the remaining 90 acres that Mr. Chase bought was where the mining activity was? Because the affidavit doesn't say that at all.
Sure, but that's... Sure, but that's the...
And Mrs. Jerome is dead, if I understand correctly.
Unfortunately, and...
So she's not going to be able to testify?
Unfortunately, I would love to have her deposition testimony.
I think we would too, but thank you.
But to address your, you know, to go back to your question...
I'm sorry.
To go back to your question regarding how to determine what areas of the property to be worked, you know, as I think you just mentioned, this property was once much larger. And over the years, the Jeromes sold off various portions, and, you know, I think the logical conclusion is the parts that weren't sold off or otherwise developed are the parts that they continued to quarry. And that's the part that Mr. Chase bought back in 2016 that the company he controls, Highland Ridge Farm, now owns.
On the, one of the affidavits that was submitted, excuse me, one of the submissions was actually a gravel license that was allegedly issued by the town, I guess, in 1974?
Seventy-four, yep.
All right. So I think in your testimony, you indicated that the town can't license anything, but it did in 1974. Hold on, let me finish. My question to you is, doesn't the issuance of that license indicate, which our ordinance requires be renewed every year, and there's no evidence in the record that that license was ever renewed either by the Jeromes or Mr. Chase from 1974 to the present time? So I'm just curious as to, you submit that as evidence of an activity of graveling that was needed in 1974, but somehow it's not needed in 2023?
So that...
And that goes to the, I think that goes to the town's violation of that you're operating a earth removal without a proper license.
Sure.
Regardless of whether or not it's preexisting or not, we have evidence in the record that at one point, a license was issued. Now, I'm going to point out that the license that's issued is not the right, is not the same address as this property, but assuming that it is for a second, it's not evidence of the fact that a license is required for earth removal operations within the town of Tiverton to continue the operations?
Sure, but the activity that's occurring at Highland Ridge Farm's property is granite quarrying, not gravel removal, which is exempted from regulation under that license.
So just so I'm clear, you're saying that there's only quarrying is happening on, there's no earth removal, whatsoever, anything like that?
Correct.
But isn't there earth removal to get to the granite?
It's granite quarrying that's going on. There's some, you know, there's some moving of topsoil on the property in order to access some of that granite.
And doesn't that moving of topsoil require a license from this town?
And this is the dance that we just did a few minutes ago, but it's my position that no, it doesn't, because that's an accessory incidental use to an allowed use at the property.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So moving on to the last of the five cease and desist notices, which is C on your agenda regarding retail or wholesale sales and/or storage. Again, incorporating all prior arguments, this notice is frankly a little absurd. A pellant doesn't have any showroom, office, storefront, display, or other building to sell its quarried granite on the property, either at retail or wholesale. This notice suggests some theory where an pellant would have to take its granite, move it off-site somewhere before pickup by the ultimate buyer. A pellant simply operates its quarry at the same property where it's been operated for decades, long before current zoning districts came into effect, and a pellant is allowed to have his granite both extracted from his property and be paid for that extraction. Once again, Cardy speaks to this, which permits a landowner to both extract and sell its products. So in conclusion, you know, from my view, this case is simple. There's an underlying predicate issue which prohibits this board from hearing these notices, which is that we're just before the wrong body. The zoning board lacks the jurisdiction necessary to determine whether or not a pellant's activity is preexisting, constitutes a preexisting nonconforming use, and therefore, all the violations that flow from that determination must fail.
Can I ask you one question? In every notice that was issued, the town indicates that regardless whether it's, they take the assumption, assuming a preexisting nonconforming use. They make that assumption.
Well, it's tough to whistle past the graveyard, however, because you still need to, you know, consider that use and then, you know, determine what's happening from there, right? So take expansion, for example. If this board can't determine what's going on there originally, then logically, you can't then determine whether or not you've engaged in impermissible expansion. Once again, I think that's something that needs to be, you know, determined before the Superior Court, before this board can take up the issue.
So would you agree with me if the Superior Court were to agree that this is a nonconforming use that's grandfathered in, an expansion could only be limited to 25% of that court?
So I think that that part of the ordinance is contrary to Cardy, and I know there's a South County case that was submitted to this board, but I don't think that case ultimately holds water.
So I think what you're really saying is you don't, it doesn't really matter what the court says as a preexisting nonconforming use, because you just don't believe that the town can regulate it in any way?
I...
Right?
So, you know, I'm not in a position to hypothesize manners in which the town can regulate it. I'm just presented with the ordinance in front of me, and I don't think that that ordinance passes muster.
And if there's no ordinance to regulate it, then there's no way to regulate it?
Ultimately.
If you believe the ordinance is unconstitutional or illegal, then your position is the town can't regulate it at all?
Then, not under that particular ordinance.
Right. And you would agree that that ordinance is pretty much mirrored in ordinance that was upheld by a Superior Court in the case that you cited, in the Cardy, I think it was not the Cardy case, it was the...
Certainly not the Cardy case.
The South County case.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, Todd Romano for the building official. I think this case is actually very simple, and I think the case law and the ordinances and statutes allow this board to make the decisions that it needs to, to affirm the cease and desist orders that were issued. I'm going to jump right to that, I guess we'll call it a legal argument, because that's what Mr. Parks has argued to you. So the zoning board is, he argues, without authority to regulate the granite quarrying. He argues that the 1973 earth removal legislation does not apply to quarrying. I would say, even assuming Highland is right that the '73 legislation does not apply to quarrying, that legislation does not prohibit a town from enacting a zoning ordinance regulating earth removal or quarrying. And I say that because of the Rhode Island Supreme Court case of Kingsley versus Miller, which was cited in my papers. And in that case, the plaintiff argued that the similar earth removal enabling legislation for the town of North Kingston preempted the town's zoning ordinance, which did not permit earth removal in the district that the plaintiff was seeking to conduct such activity. The plaintiff argued that the enabling legislation deprived the town of "statutory authority" and "jurisdiction" to enact the zoning ordinance, the very same argument you've heard from the pellant this evening. But the Supreme Court in Kingsley disagreed with the plaintiff and found the zoning ordinance applied despite the enabling legislation. The court relied on Section 15 of the enabling legislation, which provides, "This act shall not be deemed to limit by implication or otherwise any ordinance enacted pursuant to the authority of Chapter 24 of Title 45 of the General Laws of 1956 as amended."
That's the zoning ordinance?
I was just going to say that, Mr. Marcello. That is...
That's a predecessor of the zoning...
That's the statute for zoning. That's the Zoning Enabling Act, excuse me. That same Section 15 of the North Kingston enabling legislation is the same language used in the Tiverton enabling legislation. And based on that language, the court held, "The fair import of this provision is that the Earth Removal Act in no way limits or supersedes any zoning ordinance that is enacted by virtue of Chapter 24 of Title 45." The court went on and said, "The General Assembly has clearly indicated that the locale of earth removal operations is to be determined by the provisions of the town's zoning ordinance." As further proof that the town's zoning ordinance specifically, those governing nonconforming uses and quarrying can look, we can look to the cases of West Greenwich versus Cardy, which we have both cited. We both have a different interpretation of that, apparently, but I think it's very clear. In the Cardy case, the town of West Greenwich required nonconforming uses to obtain a special use permit to expand. That's what you do here. There's absolutely no difference. The Supreme Court in Cardy did not strike down that portion of the West Greenwich ordinance. It simply required Cardy Corporation to come back with objective evidence of its intent to quarry. It also said, even if it has an intent to expand its quarrying operation, it could not substantially or adversely affect the neighboring properties. Again, this is what we have here. You have a zoning ordinance which includes those provisions. The South County case, I understand Mr. Parks doesn't like that case. I like it, obviously. It's directly on point with your ordinance. No other court has said this ordinance is wrong in any other town. It's reasonable, and that's what the court would require. Finally, we can look to the purposes of zoning as stated in the General Laws. Section 452437A provides, "The zoning ordinance shall provide a listing of all land uses and/or performance standards for uses that are permitted within the zoning use districts of the municipality." Further, the General Law specifically regarding nonconforming uses states, "The zoning ordinance shall permit the continuation of nonconforming development. However, this does not prohibit the regulation of nuisances." Again, your zoning ordinance incorporates these things. That is all to say that this board has the authority to regulate granite quarrying as well as earth removal. Highland also argues that the zoning board is without jurisdiction to determine whether its activities constitute a prior nonconforming use. It's been made clear, we're not asking you to determine whether Highland's earth removal or quarrying activities constitute a prior nonconforming use. The cease and desist orders, as it has been pointed out, concede that. Instead, and it's fine, a fine distinction, the cease and desist orders each find that Highland Ridge violated the zoning ordinances in the manner it is conducting its earth removal or quarrying activities, and therefore, you are asked to interpret the provisions of the zoning ordinance, review Highland's activities against that ordinance, and ultimately determine whether there is a violation. The argument some may say is splitting here hairs, but the Rhode Island Supreme Court itself recognized this very difference in Bellevue-Oakstra Point Neighborhood Association versus Preservation Society of Newport County, 151 A3D, 1223, and 2017. There, the court specifically distinguished the cases relied on by Highland here, both Rico and, in its papers, Olean versus Zoning Board of Lincoln. And the Bellevue court said, "Neither case, however, supports its assertion that the zoning board lacks authority to interpret the zoning ordinance." And that's what you're being asked to do here, interpret the zoning ordinance. Thus, in the Bellevue case, the court held that the hearing justice properly determined that the zoning board had authority to decide, one, whether the Breakers is a lawful nonconforming use; two, whether the Welcome Center's construction would be permitted, would be a permitted movement or change in the land's nonconforming use; three, whether the Welcome Center will house a restaurant, and whether the zoning ordinance prohibits restaurant operation on a museum property; and four, whether the Welcome Center is an unpermitted accessory use on the Breakers property. Notably, the hearing justice described these issues as part and parcel of an everyday review of a building application by municipal zoning officials, in the first instance by the zoning officer, then on review by the zoning board. In this case, you are likewise being asked to interpret the zoning ordinance and determine whether Highland Ridge or its predecessor has complied with the ordinance. You have been presented with zero evidence, zero, of what was the intended extent of excavation for quarrying purposes at this parcel. Mrs. Jerome's affidavit provides you with no information to substantiate that. Your ordinance very clearly requires, your zoning ordinance very clearly requires that a survey be submitted, and that's for good reason. And that survey had to be submitted in 2001, within three months of June 4, 2001. That's for very good reason, so you would not act arbitrarily and capriciously when asked to determine whether a preexisting nonconforming quarry had gone too far, or whether it was required to get a special use permit. The argument that a special use permit is not an allowed mechanism for this town to control quarrying doesn't fly. We've talked about that with the Cardy case, but it's just good government. It's just good government.
Was the lack of a submitted survey something that the building official relied upon in its cease and desist notice?
As we've discussed in our papers, that certainly was, and as he identified in his cease and desist notices, he has no evidence of what the excavated surface was within three months of June 4, 2001. All we can use are the GIS maps, and that's what he's done.
Would he have to go to the GIS map if he, the fact that he didn't have that map or the survey done, wouldn't that be conclusive of the fact without the GIS maps?
I appreciate that point, and I would say yes, obviously, but we need to rely on evidence. So that's why we went to the GIS maps to determine what we could. I don't know if the record is closed at this point. I will say that I was reviewing additional documents today concerning prior applications that Highland Ridge or Mr. Chase has made to the planning board, and within those papers, I found a report that he commissioned regarding environmental study and natural heritage corridor from ecosystems. And there's a particularly important paragraph in there concerning that expert's findings as to the extent or non extent of the quarrying at that time. I could certainly submit it. I'd of course give Mr. Parks a copy of that and let him rebut, but it's your decision as to whether I can present that or not.
If I may, I would just object to that. I think we, at the outset of this, determined what the record was for purposes of this hearing, and I think we go forward on that
We need to hear from the lawyers and then decide what evidence we're going to be putting in, okay?
Hear from the lawyers, oh, from the butters.
Yeah.
That's certainly fine.
Everybody gets hurt.
That's certainly fine, but to that point, I mean, you're going to hear some testimony as to the impact of the current operations.
Absolutely.
And you're going to consider that as evidence.
Absolutely.
And that brings up another point as well. There's been no discussion from Highland Ridge as to what the level of disturbance was to the neighbors in 2001 or any time around then, because it can't tell us how much or if any quarrying was happening. That's important. That is very important. And they brought up the trucking, the invoices and trucking receipts from A.J. Potter. The receipts are what they show, the Excel sheets, rather, are what they are. I didn't write in the word fill. I didn't write in the word, there's categories for stone and fill. The board can make its own determination in the absence of any testimony as to what that is. Mr. Parks can't testify to that, obviously.
Can I ask you a question about the earth removal ordinance?
Yes.
So the 1973 General Assembly Act, which was specific to Tiverton, but which was mirrored in other towns, that other towns use this, other towns had similar enabling legislation, does define earth removal as the, mean the extraction or removal of any sand, gravel, loam, topsoil, stone, clay, or shale from deposits on any tract of land. And then it does, however, exclude however, extracting, removing, digging, mining, or quarrying limestone, lime rock, or granite, and excluding operations of a sand and gravel plant in operation at that time. I'm assuming, based upon that plain reading, you agree that earth removal, a earth removal license under the enabling legislation is not necessary for granite removal?
That is correct, and we admit it or agree with that as much in our papers.
But it would be required for the extraction of any sand, gravel, loam, topsoil, stone, clay, or shale in conjunction with, I guess, the quarrying activity. In other words, unless the granite is sticking out of the ground, you can probably mine that without a license. But if you've got to dig to get to that granite, you've got to, you need an earth removal license under this enabling legislation, which is mirrored by our local ordinance.
That is correct.
And the expert report that was submitted by the town and relied upon by, well, submitted by the town... submitted by the town indicating that there was, I think they call it sub, sub, overlay, overlay, overlay deposits that were removed to get to the quarry. It was, that's in, in the record, correct?
That's in the report, yes.
How about the, can you address the issue of whether or not we have to go to Superior Court, as Mr. Parks indicates, or can this board make a, a finding administratively before we get to Superior Court, related to?
For the earth.
For the enforcement of the earth removal ordinance, yeah.
Enforcement of their earth removal ordinance, and we talk about this in our papers as well, it incorporates the zoning ordinance, which thereby permits the zoning officer to cite, there is no other enforcement, eight officer in the town that could cite for violation of the earth removal ord, ordinance. So yes, this is the first proper step. And then if we seek to further enforce, we would go to the Superior Court. I, I would otherwise rely on all of my papers, because they address all of the arguments brought up by Mr. Parks tonight. And they're way better than I can speak.
Souza, your turn.
If I may briefly. I just want to put an objection on the record to the hearing of any public comment tonight. We're here on the appeal of the cease and desist notices, which were issued to Highland Ridge. This was on the agenda as an appeal, not as a hearing. We were required to submit all the materials of the court, that, not the court, that the board would consider some significant time ago. Therefore, I believe it's improper to permit, you know, public comment for consideration by the board as evidence in this matter.
Your objection.
May I respond, please?
Yeah.
Pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 452466, appeals, public hearing by zoning board of review, which this is, it's a public hearing by the zoning board of review. The last sentence provides, upon the hearing, any party may appear in person, or by agent, or by attorney. I'm sorry, that's the second to last sentence. The abutters are aggrieved parties. They have a right to be here.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Randall Souza. I've been hired by abutters and neighbors. This certainly, the operations there, sound, noise, dust, traffic, don't just affect abutters, don't just affect people within a 200-foot radius of the property, but affect other people who live on Highland Road, Bud Way, and other roads. Amongst those people, and they're here ready to testify under oath, are David Rickertby, David Stewart, Ty Levine, and some others. I have an affidavit of David Stewart, which I do want to present when and if we get into a hearing portion. So, on behalf of the neighbors, I do object to the hearing being closed. I also would move to submit that 2017 letter if the building official's counsel doesn't so move. Because in that letter, Mr. Chase's agent represents that any quarrying activity at the property ceased in the 80s. The argument by the applicant, I should say the appellant, is an interesting one. I would call it a syllogism. Fancy word, S-Y-L-L-O-G-I-S-M. I think I learned it in a college philosophy class. Here's an example of a syllogism. All tables have four legs. All dogs have four legs. Thus, tables are dogs. This is what the appellant is arguing. They say you lack an underlying predicate necessary to consider these cease and desist orders in any way. I'm not, I'm not so sure I even buy that argument. I, I do think there's case law that says a zoning board can actually decide whether a nonconforming use is legal or not. But I do admit that this board in 2021 said they wouldn't, and that the building official has issued all these cease and desises, desist orders, assuming that it's a legal nonconforming use. Because it, you have to have jurisdiction to consider this. This is an R40 zone. Is that a house? No, it's not a house. Okay. So if it's an R40 zone, it either has to be an illegal activity or a legal nonconforming use. So let's give you, appellant, the benefit of the doubt, and say it's a legal nonconforming use. Now I'm a municipality, I'm entitled to regulate that use reasonably. They, they're saying they don't even need blasting permits. If, if they can get granite, they can just detonate anything at any time, and you have no power to regulate that. So the ones that are basic regulations, such as the special permit, the need for a survey, and the need for a license, that's regulation. And we're going to assume that you have a legal nonconforming use. Because if it's not that, it's an illegal activity. So what do you want it to be? As to Cardy, I don't want to get too much in the weeds of the case law, but lawyers, and I've been accused of this sometime, too, will conveniently cite to some parts of the opinion and ignore other parts of it. Cardy is a three-pronged test. You don't hear Mr. Parks talk about the other two prongs, which the other two prongs are, the owner has to have an objective expressed intent to excavate more of the property. He can't say there, sit there and say, you know, I think 10 years from now, I'm going to go in the northeast corner and dig up some rock. You have to have an expressed objective intent. And as I think the town's council pointed out, how can you do that when you have no baseline? Because in 2001, they didn't do anything they were supposed to do, if it was a legal nonconforming use. And then the, the third prong that they ignore, of course, that it can't be harmful to the public. Well, there are plenty of people here tonight, and it's getting late. I get paid to be here. They've taken time out of their day to be here, you know, who will talk about the current conditions, the blasting, the rock crushing, the heavy machinery, the trucks hauling out products, the vibrations, the dust, none of which really happened to the extent that it's happening now, if at all, until Betty Jerome died in 2022. And then it ramped up, like, the week after. Because we all know what's going on here. The, Mr. Chase bought the property, as he's entitled to do, and thought he could make a tidy profit off it, as he's entitled to do. He's a realtor, he's very knowledgeable in these things. He came before the town a couple of times to try to build things there, subdivision approvals, assisted living facility. They got shot down, probably because of ingress and egress issues. It's a very tight part of town with some interesting topography. So, he said, what am I going to do? Be careful what you wish for, neighbors. And out of vindictiveness, he started digging everything up. And I have the affidavit of Mr. Stewart, I won't go into it because we're not in evidence yet. But he's lived there for 36 years, since 1987. And he was friendly with the Jeromes, and frequently walked and bicycled on that property. So when we create a record, he will talk about how none of this stuff happened before, certainly no ruck, rock crushing gravel operations that are going on now. By the way, one other thing, the South County case, I agree with Mr. Parks, that's a Superior Court case, that's not binding precedent, like a Rhode Island Supreme Court case. I'm sure Attorney Marcello will advise you on that. However, the judge that issued it happens to now be a federal appellate judge, First Circuit Court of Appeals in Boston. So, I think it, it carries some precedential weight. I also agree with what the town said about the, the Welcome Center case at the Breakers in Newport. These are particularly things within the zoning board's wisdom and jurisdiction to decide. You need to make some factual findings for there to be a record on appeal.
So Souza, do you think the town could go to Superior Court directly and skip this step?
Well, you, you could. I've, I've represented municipalities, I've brought actions in court seeking the enforcement of a building official's action. But that's just an option. You don't have to. You may. Frequently, so, so whether the appellant needs to exhaust administrative remedies, I'm not sure of that. But the town has the option, and I've, I've seen it done both ways, where the town goes to Superior Court to enforce, maybe because you want an injunction with the benefit of a court order. But I've seen it the other way, where the town, plenty of times, issues a cease and desist, and the first recourse is for the owner to seek an appeal through here, and then it would go up as an administrative appeal. You know, this is a residential zone, and it has been for a long time. There's, I think, 150 homes in close proximity to this site with an assessed value of $64 million. And if they, if, for instance, the value was diminished by 20% because of quarrying operations next door, that'd be 12 and a half million dollar loss, and then the concomitant decline in tax revenue for the town from that. You also have Sin and Flesh Brook right there, that goes right down the hill into the gut in Nanaquacket Pond. And I think, although I have difficulty understanding the geotechnical engineer's report, that he says it's quite possible that these type of quarrying operations could have a very adverse effect on that water supply. So, we're here tonight, we have people who are ready to testify. I know you're going to have curfew soon. I, I would recommend that the record be kept open. I want to submit the affidavit. Mr. Stewart would also testify personally. Mr. Rickertby has a presentation with the GIS maps going back through history, which is what we're relying upon here. Because the owner never did any of the things that the zoning ordinance says they should have done. So unless you have any questions for, for me, that's, would be the equivalent of our opening statement.
Can you hear me now? The hearing will remain open. Obviously, it's, I have five of 10. I think that this testimony is important and should be preserved, so we're going to need to find another date. And I don't know.
And the testimony would be as to historical operations as well as current conditions.
Absolutely.
Look, can I ask Mr. Parks, are you resting now based upon your arguments, or?
Well, I think.
Because the burden is yours, as you know, so I just wanted.
If the hearing's going to remain open, thank you. If the hearing's going to remain open, I'm gonna, you know, which I believe it is, given the, the late hour, I'm gonna, you know, reserve my right to, to add some testimony.
You're not resting? Okay. Great, thank you.
What's our next date?
We have to figure out a date.
I appreciate everybody's coming out here and being here. I think it's really important for everyone, and we really appreciate your participation. So I'm sorry that the hour got so late, but we're going to get this done. Everyone that wants to be heard will be heard.
So I think we have to coordinate with the lawyers and the members of the board, the same members who are here have to hear, continue to hear this, given the fact that we have a very lengthy agenda and another contentious matter in July. I think we're going to have to pick a date before, in the next, you know, the next three weeks or so.
We don't want to wait until July.
As I'm saying, so.
Yeah, we're not going to wait until July.
What's, what's, what's the board's pleasure as to the next date?
I'm available any day except the 13th.
I left my phone in the car.
You want to go get it?
Pick up some dates. I'm not going anywhere.
We have, we have to continue publicly.
No, I know. I'm not going anywhere.
The, does the 15th work?
No.
What is it?
I don't, I don't know right now. I'm, I have a TRO, another TRO, that I have the 14th and 15th reserved.
Yeah.
Before Taft Carter.
You'll be done by 4:30.
That's true. That is true.
In Wakefield.
Yeah, next week. So again, Randy?
It's okay for the neighbors.
The 15th?
How can I do that? I'm sorry, I'm not going to do that to Mr. Parks.
No, 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 I'm not suggesting we are, just so.
It will happen if we.
As much as I'd like.
No, we're not going to do that to Mr. Parks either. All right, so the 16th is a Friday. I don't think people want to come on a Friday.
Yeah. What's the following one?
22nd, or the 21st?
Good.
You can't do the 21st?
21st, good.
No, that's my wife's birthday. I'd get killed.
All right. 22nd, Thursday, the 22nd?
I mean, 21st is better, but I.
We have a board member who can't make the 21st.
Got it. I have a calendar item that I need to figure out, but I'm pretty sure I can.
All right.
And if I can't, I'll find somebody else.
So can you find somebody else for the 15?
No, no.
You just said you could find somebody else for the 22nd. One second, I'm just wondering what he said.
I understand. It's pretty close, though, to trying to get somebody up to speed.
Oh, thank you.
Can you do the 22nd?
22nd is okay.
This for my own. Subject, subject to Mr. Parks confirming his availability, we're going to continue this hearing to the 22nd.
It would be the only matter of all.
Correct.
Yeah. So hopefully we finish it.
Six or seven.
Seven o'clock.
Seven.
Seven o'clock.
Here?
I assume here, yeah. Well, that's, that's the other thing, we have to, we have to check the availability of this room, so we'll, we'll post it on our, on the town's website, but we have to check the availability of this room if not.
Do we actually need this one?
Yeah, why not? That's the official town.
Do we need this one?
What are you saying?
Do we need this one? I don't know.
I think we can get a formal motion. Seven o'clock, subject to the availability.
Okay, I'd like to make a formal motion to continue this matter to, for a special meeting on June 22nd at 7 o'clock.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the meeting will be continued without notice. This constitutes notice.
Come back.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.